Are you guys making opening statements?
Uh, just uh, do whatever.
Yeah, we should. Okay, we will begin. Welcome to the affordable housing study session. And I'd like to ask Supervisor Slocum and Horsley to kick it off.
Big crowd today. Um, thank you all for coming um, to our affordable housing study session. As we all know, uh, from reading the newspapers, listening to the news, talking to um, people in the county, that uh, our home prices here in San Mateo County and in California, in fact, are some of the highest home prices in the country. And um, our rents are higher than just about anywhere on the face of the planet. And some of the reasons for that are truly out of our control. Um, I think California's climate is drawing, has drawn people. Um, we have protected spaces, look up in our hills, so the amount of land to be built on is limited. This is the technology and bioscience, uh, probably capital of the world. And um, jobs have been created and people have moved here for uh, employment reasons. And as our website says, uh, San Mateo County is unique in that it's all of California in one county. And that probably draws uh, people also. But all of that affects our housing, and of course, we all know that the market is cyclical. But from the perspective that I hold, I don't see, um, and as former assessor, I might add, I don't see any signs of this changing in the near term future. I think things continue on the trajectory that we've been in. Um, there's a lot of newspaper stories recently. We've all, I think, been flooded with emails on various topics. We've all talked to various people, as I mentioned, about what's going on. And we've obviously been at events where people have shared um, their stories with us. Um, I think that's happened to each and every one of us. Um, so, uh, the affor- affordable housing uh, topic is something that's on the minds of many, many of our friends, family, and relatives. And it's just not the working poor. It's um, a lot of other uh, folks also who seem to have just a, a general anxiety about the way things um, are headed. So, we all know that we live in one of the most prosperous counties in the United States. Um, but at the same time, um, as I work in North Fair Oaks, I can tell you that there are many, many, many families who are barely able to pull together a month's rent. And I think, coupled with that, recently, um, we were in a, a committee meeting and we were told, uh, this is Supervisor Horsley and myself, that it takes around five thousand or more dollars for a person even to move into a rental unit because of things like first and last rent, security deposits, credit checks, and so forth and so on. So just imagine having to um, plop down five thousand or more dollars just to move into a rental unit. So, as I said, it's not just about low income families, but it's about seniors, it's about veterans, it's about our neighbors, it's about um, working people throughout, I think, the county. The area that I represent is um, obviously a, a unique um, area. It's East Palo Alto, North Fair Oaks, uh, Redwood City, and the eastern part of Menlo Park. And as I mentioned, it's just not um, um, the working poor who are affected, but we've heard from teachers in school districts, uh, there are districts within San Mateo County where teachers are actually leaving the area because they can't afford to be here any longer. Our fire and police folks, and even San Mateo County workers, we, I'm sure we all know, San Mateo County workers who um, commute from Tracy, or Stockton, or Modesto, places far away. So, I think on behalf of the entire board and my colleagues, we're very pleased to have the opportunity to uh, hold this study session. And just a little housekeeping, if I could, our agenda, you may all have it in front of you, I'm not sure, um, but we're gonna start, we started at 1:30. Um, by 2 o'clock, we should be into the white paper discussions. At 2:45, hopefully we'll take a short uh, break, and we'll resume with the white paper discussion around 2:55. At 3:50, that's 3:50, we're gonna take public comment, and I see President Groom has a large stack of comment cards here. But just in case you missed, uh, please fill out one of these and give it to the clerk of the board. And at 4:40 or thereabouts, we'll wrap up, and by 5 o'clock, um, we will uh, adjourn. Let me uh, just thank the people seated here and others who have really crafted the details of the white paper, which is basically a multi-pronged, uh, 11-point strategy for uh, policy regarding affordable housing. And they've worked tirelessly over several months, and I've heard, just by way of information, from many uh, people and organizations who uh, read the white paper and who were very complimentary of your work. So, on behalf of my colleagues and all the people uh, who have read that paper, thank you. And um, if I could, uh, just give a special shout out to Peggy Jensen, who was um, I think instrumental in really putting this all together. And of course, where would we be without John Niblin, um, one of the county's county council's lawyer, um, from the Department of Housing, of course, a very capable, uh, Bill Lowell, Janet Stone, and Doug Frederick. And from the health system, uh, ST Mayor, and I'm not sure if I'm missing anybody there, but um, also from planning and building, Lisa, uh, I'm not sure how to pronounce her last name.
Owzosa.
Owzosa, and Will Gibson, and Steve Monowitz. So, thank you all very much for the work. It represents a significant product. And um, I think, speaking on behalf of everybody, this is a, a place to start. We're not gonna solve this problem with any silver bullet. We're not gonna solve the problems uh, here and uh, now, today. But hopefully, um, this conversation can continue uh, beyond today. So with that, let me just close and, and turn it over to Supervisor Horsley, who might wanna share his um, perspectives on the matter.
Well, thank you Supervisor Slocum. Um, and it has been a pleasure working with you, as well as the entire staff on this um, project. And I wanna welcome all of the folks who have come to this. I think it's really incredible that we've developed so much interest on part of our citizens throughout the, the whole Bay Area, the whole county of San Mateo County. And, you know, I, I was thinking about this, um, the idea of being able to have decent housing really should be a basic right. And actually, it's a right that really uh, kind of dates with the founding of this country, in fact. But I started looking around, and as I want to do, as kind of a little bit of a historian, I looked at, in the federal policy, homeownership actually, or the issue of federal policy on homeownership, actually started during the depression. It was 1937, when it was the Federal Housing Administration, part of the New Deal, and it created the first Affordable Housing Administration dedicated to permitting all Americans to potentially become homeowners, and for the working poor to have decent housing. That's been a cornerstone of government, federal policy. Uh, unfortunately, uh, there doesn't appear to be a lot of federal funding coming down the pike, but that's been something that, that all administrations have talked about as a basic American value, being able to own your own home, or at least have a decent housing for all. And you know, in San Mateo County, what we're now finding is that, well, we knew that homeownership was really difficult and becoming even more difficult, and it's really desirable and high-priced area. But now we're finding that even to have a rental home is becoming increasingly out of reach. So, unlike the uh, times of the depression, we have sort of the exact opposite with the booming economy, but it's created the same kind of a crisis for us, so. But, you know, I do think that there are some really hopeful signs, and as Supervisor Slocum was saying, that uh, we are seeing some of the bigger corporations like Google and Facebook looking at building housing. Specifically, Google has talked about 2,000 houses for their employees. In fact, uh, you know, the Google is, uh, they're building this giant uh, complex in just south of San Mateo County, and they have somewhere in the neighborhood of about 20,000 employees in this area. They actually called this, by the way, kind of collegiate clever, they call it the Google's Plex, uh, in this area. So, you know, and they are be, actually moving into San Mateo County as well. So we're, we're gonna see, these corporations, I think, are seeing that their own employees are having a difficult, very difficult finding housing. And they, I think, it really is a good opportunity for us to be able to partner with them and to really take advantage of their interest in housing. And as Supervisor Slocum said, uh, you know, we're not gonna solve the problem today, and no one entity is gonna solve it. It's gonna take each party doing their part, and all of us working collaboratively together. So, we are gonna take a significant amount of time today, and we're gonna listen to a lot of things uh, from uh, the county staff, as well as from the general public. Um, this is a ro- large and difficult and challenging issue for all of us. But as President John F. Kennedy said, "There are risks and costs to action, but they are far less than the long-range risk of comfortable inaction." So I really, as uh, Super, my colleague, uh, has said, uh, you really wanna thank the staff. This has really been a cross-departmental uh, project between health, uh, planning, the CMO's office. I really wanna thank all of you for all the work that you've done. So I'm really looking forward to hearing the input, not only from your input, but also input from the public to see if there are some additional ideas besides the ideas that we have, uh, or that the, the staff has developed in our white paper. So with that, we'll proceed.
Okay.
Okay. I am. Good afternoon, President Groom, members of the board, and county staff. Thank you very much for holding this important study session regarding affordable housing in San Mateo County. I'm gonna give uh, some brief remarks, an overview of where we are, how we got here, before we dive into some possible solutions. So, what is happening, and how did we get here? As you know, demand for housing has risen rapidly from the recovery, with the recovery from the Great Recession. This continues a trend with strong roots in the 1990s that was only temporarily interrupted by the recession. Supply of new housing units has failed to increase even a fraction as much as the number of new jobs and households added to our community. Increased demand for units, of course, without a commensurate increase in supply, has put pressure on prices. But this chart shows median contract rent levels through 2013. Recently, the average advertised rent for a two-bedroom apartment in the county was approximately $2,600. This supply and demand imbalance is the result of the addition of vastly more new jobs compared with new housing units. The number of housing units created over the last generation is a very small fraction of the number of thousands of additional jobs created and millions of square feet of office space developed. I just actually, uh, this morning, had some figures from our current assessor. And uh, to, to give you an example of things that are coming, there is, uh, under construction, 3.9 million square feet of commercial development. It's mostly office, but it can include supermarkets and, and so on. And in the planning phase, that the county knows about so far, 13.3 million square feet. Saying this, we must also wonder, who could complain about such incredible economic development? Most communities would do almost anything to attract just one of the companies that has grown so readily within our county. Unfortunately, the goose that laid the golden egg of the tech-driven boom forgot to build enough nests for the hatchlings. The next slide shows one of the consequences of this. It's showing the number of jobs held by San Mateo County residents versus residents from surrounding counties for jobs in our county. It's a little hard to see, but uh, and also 2014 is just coming out next month. But through 2013, we can still see that of 39,000 jobs added between 2010 and 2013, 33,000 of them are held by workers who must commute into the county. And this is a story that we know in 2014 would have accelerated. As rents have gone up, the percentage of income spent on housing has increased to unhealthy levels that negatively impact the ability of families to afford other necessities. This is especially true for low-income families whose incomes have not increased, and for middle, middle-income families whose incomes may actually have decreased, assuming that national trends are matched by performance in San Mateo County. The most commonly used standard for what's called housing cost burden is that houses, house, households, on average, uh, of average and modest means, should pay no more than 30% of household income for rent. When households are paying more than 50% of household income for rent, they are regarded as severely cost-burdened. And this is showing, uh, basically from left to right, the extremely low income of 30% of area median income, the middle is uh, 50%, and the right side is the regular, if you will, low-income, 80% of AMI. And it's showing cost burdens, as you can see on the left, and in the low-income group, which 30%, typically, um, the vast majority of people in 30% um, are elderly and/or disabled, and are paying 80% of household income and rent. I would say that uh, it's not a, a reef that we want to claim in our county, but um, we are one of the top few most unaffordable counties in the country. There are indeed many consequences to the growing inability of middle and low-income households to rent in the county. As noted in an LA Times, uh, January 15 editorial, quote, "Families facing heavy monthly housing costs may not have enough money left over for food, healthcare, transportation, and other necessities. They may be forced to make trade-offs or compromises that have broader societal and economic impacts. A parent may have to work two full-time jobs to afford a decent home, leaving little time to spend with his or her children. Workers may move further away in search of cheaper housing, but spend hours commuting, clogging freeways, and polluting the air. People may move into converted garages and other illegal and unsafe units, and ultimately, businesses may choose to locate in regions with lower housing costs in order to attract workers. As a county government, we are especially concerned with the families that receive safety net services from the county, whether because of age, health status, or income. We've worked diligently over the years to build housing subsidy programs for poor working families, the homeless, seniors, and persons with, with disabilities, among others. Unfortunately, because there is effectively a zero rental vacancy rate in the county, and severe competition for any unit that comes on the market, our clients, even when they have rental subsidies, are unable to secure a unit. As an example, we have always kept the maximum number of our 4,300 vouchers outstanding at all times in use. However, because of the competition for rental units, even families with vouchers that would otherwise have secured housing are unable to use their vouchers. Since the beginning of 2013, when we began to issue vouchers again after a hiatus caused by the federal budget sequestration debacle, 642 vouchers have expired because the families holding the vouchers have not been able to locate homes to rent. So those are families that, in turnover, that we would bring in through the eligibility process, go through all the steps, issue the voucher, and then they have a certain number of months to find housing. We extend it, but ultimately, the vouchers expire. That happened to 642 vouchers. Um, we've always kept our uh, voucher outstandings as close to 100% as possible, and uh, last month it went down again, so just at 90%. Question came up this morning, so at lunchtime, I made another slide about voucher utilization, and what we're doing with the aid of your board, because I was back two weeks ago when we submitted our MTW Plan Amendment to Washington. We uh, have increased subsidies repeatedly, but most recently in October of 14 and February of 15, we, by board action two weeks ago, we submitted a Plan, MTW Plan Amendment, uh, Moving to Work Plan Amendment, for folks who don't know what that is in the audience. And so it's, uh, that was submitted and should be approved this month. It's for housing locator services, landlord incentives, uh, and deposit assistance, being able to use some of our housing assistance payment money for those purposes. Um, we've also loosened our restrictions on second uh, units, uh, for, for folks with vouchers. We're in, trying to increase our um, provider-based program that we have with Cora and Service League and some others. And uh, we're talking a lot with hip housing and others about increasing shared housing. Vouchers can be used in shared housing. So, um, with that, um, you know, I guess the question, or the, the overall situation, the dire situation poses some extremely difficult questions that we've all been grappling with. The way I would put it is, um, are we, as a society, creating additional long-term health concerns and poor outcomes for families who are living with increased stress and with less available income for anything other than housing? Will the county's remarkable multimillion-dollar investment in something like the Big Lift Initiative be crippled because of housing instability and unaffordability? Shifting gears a little bit, the creation of affordable housing requires three things: land, capital, and political will. As for land, while there are many opportunities for infill development and redevelopment along our transportation corridors and in our downtowns, we are also in an older suburban county that was quote-unquote "built out" in the traditional sense in the 50s, 60s, and 70s. As for capital, we have suffered the loss of most affordable housing funding resources over the past several years. Since the early 2000s, state housing bond funds have been fully utilized. The federal budget has been cut approximately in half for housing. And redevelopment agencies, the single most important source of funding for affordable housing and community development, were dissolved during the last state budget crisis. With the elimination of the redevelopment agencies, the exhaustion of bonds, and the federal budget cuts, funding in our state for development and preservation of affordable homes has decreased by approximately 80%, from $1.7 billion a year to nearly nothing. Finally, by way of a privately funded source, building option, um, the Palmer Court decision severely hampered inclusionary building options, which required that housing developers set aside a percentage of their new units at below-market rates. As for political will, I do attend many public meetings, and I am well aware of the residents' very legitimate concerns about traffic and parking. I have learned the hard way that while it is a fact, it may also be counterintuitive to try and assert at a public meeting that increased density will reduce traffic. I hear people ache for the time when they moved to the county, whether it was in the 50s, the 70s, the 90s, or a few years ago. At a more fundamental level, I hear residents worried about their quality of life. And I wonder if there aren't opportunities to discuss quality of life in a way that asks, "How do we have a county that accommodates all ages and income levels, as it did in the past?" How practical is it to expect a teacher, or a nurse, or a young businessperson to commute from Tracy, or Stockton, or Gilroy? It isn't. But I can tell you that for every affordable housing unit created in our county, there is an equivalent car removed from rush hour on the San Mateo Bridge or Highway 101. Can we see that the lack of affordable housing is the number-one threat to our economy and way of life? Now that I've thoroughly depressed everyone, I know it's, it's my, it's in my job description. I would like to shift gears a little bit. Um, in 2013, the county, through your board, by your board, broke new ground by dedicating 13.4 million in one-time former redevelopment agency funds toward the development of new affordable housing. 10 million for affordable housing and 3 million for shelter, repair, and expansion. The fund was named the Affordable Housing Fund, or AHF, and in 2014, your board added an additional 5 million to the fund from the housing authority. The results have been fantastic. Countywide in years past, there was, I've, I've researched the last 15 years, countywide in years past, there was one, occasionally at most two, new affordable housing complexes under construction at any one time. As we meet, there are three complexes coming out of the ground, and within several months, we reasonably expect this number to increase to seven complexes. This unprecedented activity would not have been possible without the Affordable Housing Fund. It is also worth mentioning that all of these projects have significant contributions of land and/or funding from each of the cities in which they are located. And so I put up here the three that are currently under construction, 241 units, and the four that are gonna start in, uh, several, within several months, certainly this year. 198. And you can see also that they are really all around the county. The Department of Housing works closely with developers to prioritize county clients within the overall framework of affordable development, including the disabled, clients served by the Mental Health Services Act, health plan, and health department's dual Medicare/Med-Cal program, and homeless veterans. When the county created, when your board created the Affordable Housing Fund, it was with the understanding that the county commitments were perhaps of an interim nature, while federal and state programs were reformulated to once again fund affordable housing development. So finally, I would like to update you with developments on the federal and state fronts. Ah, and I left off in another slide. Just, sometimes people ask, in terms of our, uh, the money that we're, we are putting into this, that we're investing, so is there a pipeline? Are there more? So in addition to what I had just shown you, we know of at least seven other projects, um, that are in early development with approximately 1,000 units. And some cities have figured out ways to work with the Palmer decision, and it is still include inclusionary units. For example, city of San Mateo is very good at that. The federal funding outlook, um, not so positive. Uh, state will be better, I promise. The CDPG and home programs, our main programs, face continuing cuts, not only from Congress, even the administration has proposed cuts. The National Housing Trust Fund is starting, finally, in 2016, eight years after it was authorized. It will be a s- a very small amount, um, but it is beginning unless, unless it gets killed this year. And the low-income housing tax program, this is important, there are improvements proposed that could produce a modest bo- boost of funds available. On the state side, it's more, uh, much more favorable. Enacted, uh, last year, the vote has approved the $600 million reallocation of the Veterans' Bond Money, uh, the first 75 million, NOFA for the first 75 million of that is out right now. Um, cap and trade money, a slice of that has been dedicated to housing. Uh, this year it's 120 million. The program has been widely criticized for some of its dysfunction, but they wanted to get it off the ground rapidly, and we're working with the state, all of us in the housing community, to, to try and make that better for next year, when it's expected to be at least 200 million. And there was, uh, 47 and a half million in state multifamily program, uh, MHP, for special needs approved. We submitted, uh, the Royal We, MHA, uh, with our help, uh, submitted an application for that for our North Fair Oaks project, and it, it scored pretty much at the top of all the projects. So we hope for good news. And then, three things are proposed this year that are extremely important. First, the permanent source, which is the fee bill again on, on recordings, um, that's a tough, that's a heavy lift, and it requires two-thirds, and there's a, always a lot of opposition. The second one is the one to keep our eyes on. Um, Tony Atkins, Speaker Tony Atkins has introduced a bill that would increase low inca- the state side of the low-income housing tax credit by $300 million annually. And this would also enable developers in California of affordable housing to leverage an additional 300 to 600 million from federal, uh, low-income housing tax program. So we could be looking at 600 to 900 million dollars on an annual basis. And there's also a proposal for, to use Prop 47 savings, partially. So, let me just finish. Um, as we turn to the white paper, I want to acknowledge that I've referred constantly to affordable housing. This is because of the county's safety net responsibilities and the Department of Housing's mission. For all of us, however, the care, and for all of us, the care of our county's clients and our state men- and our state mandates for care of the indigent come first. However, I would like to leave this introduction with gratitude to the board for making housing a top priority, and to acknowledge that this means increasing the supply of both market-rate and subsidized units for rent and for sale. It means making it easier to build housing, but also requiring developers to set aside units for low-income residents in exchange for permission to build bigger, taller projects. It means preserving the number of affordable units by adopting a no-net-loss policy that ensures subsidized units won't disappear when buildings are demolished or replaced, and some other proposals that we have for you today. So now, onto the white paper.
Thank you very much, Bill, for that wonderful introduction. Thank you very much, Bill, for the introduction. We're now going to turn, as Bill said, to the white paper. I'd just like, by way of preface, to say that the white paper is in response to a request from your board made last October during the homelessness report back session. At that session, your board asked us staff to look into ways that we could assist you in developing more affordable housing in the county. And as Supervisor Slocum said, this has been very much a team effort. I would like to add my thanks to all the participants on this project. They're a very capable, creative, and expert group. I'd also like to point out two additional members of our team, Mavee Johnson and Shereen Malakazali from the health system, who are also joined by Louise Rogers in the audience today, should any questions come up regarding the health system and their involvement in housing. So turning to the Affordable Housing White Paper, when we, as a group, sat down to discuss how we would approach this, how we would answer the questions that your board has posed, we came back and said, there are two questions we feel we need to address as staff. The first question was to lay out, what has the county done to date about affordable housing? And the second was, what more can be done? What options can we present to your board for further consideration to assist tenants remain in homes that are currently affordable for them? And what can we do to promote the development of more affordable housing units countywide? Well, in answering that first question, we found that, in fact, your board has done quite a bit. As Bill has clearly laid out, there's a lot more work that needs to be done, but you all have taken a number of steps. Over the past 12 years, your board and the county has, through funding and also through staff time, significant staff time, very capable staff, have contributed to the development of 1,554 affordable housing units. And as Bill discussed with you, the Affordable Housing Fund that your board created has made significant contributions in the last four years. If you include the recommended contribution that was put forward by the Measure A Subcommittee today, over the past four years, your board will have devoted through 2017 almost $25 million to the development of affordable housing in San Mateo County. In addition to contributing funds, the board has also asked our real property staff to evaluate all of our county resources, all of our county parcels, and see if there are any sites that are suitable for housing. At this point, there's nothing that is specifically under development, but we do have some long-range plans. In addition to that, at your request, our staff are constantly on the lookout for land swaps and for other opportunities to purchase land that might become available. So this is definitely a priority for all of our staff. So in addition to funding and property resources, your board has also adopted a variety of tools that have allowed our planning department to encourage development of affordable housing. You have adopted a second dwelling, second dwelling unit ordinance that establishes standards and acceptable locations for this affordable housing option, and Steve Monowis will be talking a little bit more about how we can expand that later in the presentation today. You've also adopted a density bonus program that allows more units on a parcel in return for developers, including a specific number of affordable units in that project. And finally, the county has an inclusionary housing policy, which Chief Deputy County Council John Lindman will talk about a little later in this presentation. And finally, in 2004, your board adopted a rent control ordinance for mobile home parks, which limits increases in rent in mobile home parks to once every 12 months, and that increase can only be a percentage of the current CPI. That ordinance applies to the over 700 mobile homes that are located in the unincorporated area of the county. So a lot actually has been done, but what more can be done? What our team came up with in the white paper was 11 recommendations. We researched best practices and looked nationally to find out who was doing the most creative and most productive, taking the most creative and most productive steps to address what is actually a national housing crisis. Because 11 recommendations is going to take a long time to present, and we've, in fact, set aside a little over an hour and a half this afternoon for that discussion, what I'd like to suggest to your board, and what we've actually discussed with Supervisor Horsley and Supervisor Slocum, is taking a consistent approach with each recommendation. Staff are prepared to provide a very brief introduction to that recommendation, and then provide time for the board to ask staff questions and have discussion among yourselves. What we'd like to suggest is that you provide direction to staff with one of three statements, whether you'd ask us to implement the recommendation as it's presented in the white paper, or with potential slight changes, whether you'd like us to go back and study further, provide further study on the issue, and report back at a future date, whether we haven't maybe included all the considerations you'd like. I should add that many of the recommendations are to provide further study, to provide us the direction to come back to you, but there may be ones where you want us to go in a slightly different direction. And finally, there may be recommendations where you feel that no further action is needed at this time. So that's our suggestion to the board. At that point, that concludes my overview or introduction to the white paper. Are there any questions about the background, or our proposed approach to the presentation? Okay. With that, I'd like to proceed into recommendation one from the white paper. About 16 years ago, the executive directors of the San Mateo County Legal Aid Society and the Peninsula Conflict Resolution Center came together to create the Landlord and Tenant Information and Referral Collaborative of San Mateo County. That project provided bilingual information about landlord and tenants' rights and responsibilities via bilingual brochures, a bilingual website, staff trainings for many of the nonprofit agencies and safety net providers in the county, and also held a number of community workshops. For particularly complicated cases, legal support was also provided to the local service providers. The collaborative was funded by the Peninsula Community Foundation, but unfortunately, back in 2004, it was disbanded. While there are many community-based organizations that currently provide assistance to tenants who are having challenging issues with their landlords, there is not a countywide coordinated landlord-tenant information program at this time. Which leads us to recommendation one for consideration by your board. That recommendation is to direct staff to assess the current resources in the county, also the resources available in nonprofits and other organizations that are currently devoted to preventing housing crises from becoming evictions. Our goal is to help people stay in homes where they're already living. And from that assessment, what we're recommending is that we would work with our community partners to develop a countywide landlord-tenant information and referral program. If your board supports those recommendations, staff will report back with a proposed work plan, a timeline, a budget, and performance measures for such a program. That concludes my presentation. We await your direction.
Three choices. Implement, study, no action.
I just had a comment. When you say countywide, would you then have the cities all involved in that as well?
Everyone.
Everyone, so we collaborate with everybody. Okay. Looking forward to assess the resources.
Yeah, well, I was gonna say the same thing. I would direct the staff to actually look into directing, or direct the staff to look into a countywide tenant landlord rights education assistance program, pretty much modeled on the program that existed previous to 2004.
It would be modeled on that? I think what we want to do is go out and look at what people are doing now and bring together the best practices.
Adrian, did you vote?
Yes.
Okay, implement.
Implement.
Okay.
Certainly, I think we should go forward with this. I guess a question or a suggestion for my colleagues. You know, in discussions with some of the rental, the apartment association, there's been a suggestion on their part that there perhaps be some mechanism where people feel that their rent has been raised excessively, that they could have some third party help talk about...
Mediation.
Right. And so I would think this is, that something would probably fall under this category. So if it's okay with the colleagues, I would suggest we add that to the report back.
We will look at that.
Did you vote for?
So voting, of course, for.
I'm voting for, but could I just add one little thing? I'm not sure if it fits in this section or a following section, but another thing that the apartment association people talked about was the idea of an apartment building registry, where there would be, there are, I guess in San Jose, there are periodic reviews of the inventory to make certain things, like living conditions and mold, or whatever the issue might be, is properly addressed. But I guess there are, in San Jose, and there was one other city, I can get to you later, and so I would like to suggest that we explore that idea, and I'm not sure if it fits in this section or a subsequent section, but that was one of the additional ideas that came forward from the apartment association.
We will do that.
Number two.
Good afternoon, President Graham, honorable members of the board, Mr. Malp, Mr. Byers. I've got the responsibility today to talk a little bit about rent stabilization and just cause eviction ordinances, a matter, I guess, is of some interest probably to some people present. I thought it might make sense to maybe start with a little bit of historical context, just so we can sort of see where we've come and what the current state of the law is, after I've had a chance to kick that around a little bit. Historically, as you can see, there were two, at least two general types of rent control here in California. One, you called vacancy control. This is really what we would have considered, prior to 1995, strict rent control. And this is the system under which units would remain subject to rent control even at the time that a unit becomes vacant. The other sort of primary type of rent control is what we call vacancy decontrol/recontrol. This term's a little bit confusing, but again, that would be more sort of what we would consider moderate rent control. And that's sort of the notion that every time there's a vacancy in the unit, the landlord has the power to adjust the rental rate to current market. And then from there, the unit would become subject to whatever control mechanisms would exist in the ordinance. And prior to 1995, some California jurisdictions, including, for example, Berkeley, where I was going to school, had this vacancy control, this strict rent control. And as Peggy had mentioned, manufactured home communities have been subject to rent control here in California for quite some time, including in San Mateo County. So I don't intend to talk at length about manufactured home communities, except to the extent there are questions on it. So the lay of the land changed significantly in 1995, when the state legislature adopted the Costa-Hawkins Rental Housing Act. What that had the effect of doing, as you can see, is preempting local strict rent control ordinances, and basically leaving the state with the, again, the sort of moderate rent control I was talking about before, the vacancy decontrol. And as I was noting, that allows owners to set an initial rent at the vacancy or the commencement of a tenancy. From there, those rent rates are controlled, at least until there's another vacancy that occurs, at which point, again, the rent can be reset to current market. So under Costa-Hawkins, there are certain properties that are exempt even from this system I was describing to you. Properties that were initially occupied after February 1st, 1995, are not subject to rent control at all. Under state law, local jurisdictions are not able to impose a rent control system on those units. Any unit that was exempt from residential rent control on or before the 1st of February 1995 similarly remains exempt and cannot be subject to rent control. And as you can see, single-family homes, condos with a separate title also cannot be subjected to local rent control. So typically, hand in hand with rent control, jurisdictions that have rent control will have just cause eviction ordinances. These are ordinances, basically, as you can see, and as I've described, when there is a vacancy, the owner of a unit has the power to reset rent to current market. Consequently, it sort of makes sense, as you think about, you know, these vacancy decontrol ordinances, that you want to have some mechanism, or many jurisdictions that have set up rent control have found it appropriate to have a mechanism to ensure that vacancies are only created for good cause. And thus, again, these things typically go hand in hand. Costa-Hawkins specifically states that local jurisdictions maintain the ability to regulate the basis of eviction, and, as I said, most jurisdictions with rent control, in fact, have these just cause eviction ordinances. These ordinances typically set grounds for eviction that, you know, really are tied to material breaches of the lease, non-payment of rent, violations of material terms of the lease, damaging the premises in some significant way. So again, the idea is to ensure that people are only removed from their vacancies for good, significant reasons. Again, jurisdictions that have established rent control typically also establish rent control, rent stabilization boards. And these rent stabilization boards are given specific responsibilities, typically to oversee the implementation of these ordinances. So this involves things like registering units, perhaps this is something along the lines that Supervisor Slocum was referring to earlier, but registering of units, adjusting rent ceilings, adjusting individual rents when there's appropriate. The ordinances typically, like our mobile home rent control ordinance, will set typically a maximum rate that rent can be increased in any given year, but these ordinances typically also include a safety valve that will allow, in the case of any particular tenancy, an application if the set sort of ordinance rate is insufficient to, you know, afford a fair return to a particular landlord. And the rent stabilization boards would typically deal with those individual applications. So having gone through that very quickly, our recommendations with respect to the second particular subject are to give us direction to go ahead and further research rent stabilization and just cause eviction ordinances. By my count, there are something on the order of 14 or 15 jurisdictions here in the state that have rent control at this point, many of them in the Bay Area. And, you know, we've done some initial looking at the rent stabilization ordinances that exist, but there's more that could be done, and we'd certainly, you know, be looking for direction if that's what you wanted us to do. We would also, you know, recommend that we develop a staffing plan and a budget needed for implementation. I would note that the rent stabilization board piece is a fairly significant undertaking, and I would anticipate that that would be somewhat resource-intensive. Again, a recommendation that we would develop a public comment process, given the significant interests that exist with respect to this, and that we would report back to you once we've had a chance to pursue these steps for any further direction you might want to provide. So subject to any questions, that's what I have for you on this subject.
If I may, just two quick questions. From the research I've done, it seems like rent control, rent stabilization is more common in mobile home parks. Is there any reason why that is?
It's very common, actually, in rent control parks, or I'm sorry, in manufactured home In terms of the reasons why, I think that the, so the rationale for rent control in mobile home communities really is tied to the sort of the nature of the assets you have sitting there. Typically, the individual tenant owns the home itself, but doesn't own the underlying fee. And so there are some significant sort of bargaining, you know, inequities or difficulties there when you're dealing with that situation, and you could find yourself in a really sort of unfortunately coercive situation if you were dealing with unscrupulous people.
And the second one, are you aware of jurisdictions where they've pursued a just cause provision without rent control?
Yes, there are some jurisdictions that, to my recollection, that have just cause eviction ordinances. No reason why they have to be together. I think there are some jurisdictions that have adopted just cause eviction ordinances without rent control. They don't have to go hand in hand.
Thank you.
Can I ask a question? I know you only want to say one or two words, but I guess what I'm trying to figure out, you know, you talk about what it would take to put something like this together and have... together and have a board and do all these things. I guess the question I have is how many rental units in the unincorporated area are there? I mean, I guess what I'm trying to do is sort of that cost-benefit analysis, if there's some things we can do to encourage, you know, apartment owners to not escalate the rents versus, you know, building this whole kingdom and not have that many units we're really taking a look at.
Well, that's, I appreciate the question. As I was pointing out, there are a number of units that are exempt, including every unit that has a certificate of occupancy that is dated after February 1st, 1995, units that were otherwise exempt prior, so, but I would have to defer to others around me with respect to the scope of, you know, what we might be talking about.
We need to work on the numbers a little bit, but this slide is showing, this is based on the U.S. Census data, which does the annual American community surveys, and it's showing, and I can't read that far. It's, in, in the unincorporated county, which is the green on the left, it's over 2,000 units of rental, and then about half of those are in North Fair Oaks and half are in the rest of the county. The county assessor did a little different count and had a lower number, so we need to suss out what's the difference, you know, who's counting mobile homes, who was counting, we were counting, this counts two units and above, not single family. So, but it's, it's, you could say roughly between about 1,500 and 2,000 rental units in the unincorporated county, some of which are already, would already be controlled by virtue of being either Section 8 housing or some other kind of housing, like in Colma, for example, around Colma Station, we have a couple hundred units that are tax credit units or public housing. So those are rental units, and they would be in these numbers as well. So we could get back to you with additional information. The total number is probably, call it 2,000 or less, and then some of those are already, by deed restriction, controlled, so we'd have to look at that.
If I might, the only other thing I would add from the assessor's numbers was that he was able to sort out the units that were built before 1995, and those would be the only units that could be subject to rent control or rent stabilization under the Costa-Hawkins Act, so that's why those numbers were lower.
Thank you.
Pretty small.
I guess that where I'm going with this is, I mean, there's a lot of things you're going to present to us today as far as affordable housing, a lot of different ways we can look at, what we could do quickly, and I guess my only concern about saying, yeah, go ahead and do this, I like to know the numbers first. It just seems like when you talk about sending up a whole rent control board and all these bells and whistles, I'd sure like to know what we're talking about before, I'm just uncomfortable doing it until I really know what we're talking about in the way of numbers and locations, and is this going to make it? I do have the thing we got from Mark Church, but that's incorporated areas versus unincorporated, and unincorporated is much smaller here. So I guess that's sort of where I'm going, is I would sort of hold that till we had all the information to make an educated decision. These other ones, I think, have a little more meat to them, because we could put money into affordable housing, et cetera, we can, you know, leverage money for those things. But here, I'm not sure what I'm working with, so I'm not sure what, if it's appropriate to make that effort at this point, till we know the numbers we're dealing with.
I'm just going to say, this is probably the most controversial of all, though. Issues that we're looking at today, yesterday, all of the emails were anti-rent control, and today, most of the emails were for rent control. And I think people don't realize this, Supervisor Tessier's saying, it's actually the number of rental units in the county is actually rather small. But, I mean, I think that there's some value, I think you've been asking for more information about, you know, how many units we actually would be able to affect is certainly pertinent, but there are, I think there are other things that we should look at. I know we were talking to the apartment association the other day, and they talked about some, because we asked them essentially, you know, what would you do? You, we have all these tenants that are coming to us with these outrageous increases in rents, like 50% in a fairly short period of time, and they came up with some suggestions about making people have, or making landlords give more than 60 days' notice, maybe it's 90 days or 120 days, and then not being able to have, you know, more than one rent increase in a year. So I think there's some other things to look at, in that if we decide to actually go forward and look at potential rent stabilization, there are other issues that we could also take a look at as well. So as Supervisor Tessier said, I'd like to have more information about exactly if we actually went into this and we created this new, looks like a new massive bureaucracy, you know, is it really worth it? Do, you know, are we really affecting such an infinitesimal small amount of the market that perhaps that's not really worth our effort? On the other hand, maybe it is. So I just think we need more information.
Yeah. I mean, I think, you know, I guess I'd urge the board to kind of go ahead and make a decision whether, whether we want to, some kind of, what kind, if we want to report back or not, in that it is going to be a small number of units, any way you look at it. It could be as low as 1,000, might be as high as, it's small, right? And if this all hap, you did this study, you came back, and there were three votes for it, it's a lot of ifs, a lot of big ifs, and nobody else did it, it wouldn't make a hell billion beans difference. But, you know, the reason why they're in control discussion is, you know, is important is, you know, it's an issue that affects, you know, all our, all our cities, too, you know, particularly cities with large rental, rental populations. And I think, you know, one place where, I think, where we can add some value, even if we, even if we don't go forward with this, is to have a good dialogue about it, put it on the table, don't be afraid to talk, maybe that's not the right way to put it, go ahead and talk about it. Because again, I think we know that the numbers, the number is small, and if it was just us, it wouldn't make any difference. You know, if, you know, Burlingame, where 51% of the people rent, adopted a rent, rent control, and there's great reluctance in that community to do that, in fact, there's an ordinance against it, that would make a big difference, you know, in our other big cities where, you know, there's a large number of renters generally. So, I mean, the challenge for the county as a whole, not just, not just us five, but all the elected leaders, is are we going to, is this an area of, you know, that this county collectively wants to pursue? I would say right now that political will is probably, you know, is probably more political will against it than for it. I think that's, I think that's, but on the other hand, the situation is just so fundamentally dire, that is, I've said many times now, I'm skeptical of it, frankly, and I would never have thought that I would, would even want to go this far. But I am, because, because, not only is our, our situation is really unparalleled in that this is the hottest job engine anywhere in the country. You know, by my calculations, we have 17 million square feet of off, of new office and commercial coming. If you assume one person for 250 square feet, that's 70,000 new jobs in the next four years, and a lot of those are going to be the tech community. So unless the market collapses, which I don't think is going to happen anytime soon, situation is going to, going to compound itself. And again, as we've heard today and will hear in testimony, the escalation in rent is just tearing away the fabric of the community, in a way that I've, I couldn't, I couldn't even have imagined. So, you know, I think, so for those reasons, I think we should have, I would have been inclined to ask our staff to begin to look at this. Again, I think we're a long way away from adopting it, I mean, even in my own mind, but I think collectively across this county, we've got to, we've got to talk about it.
Thank you. Personally, I have a lot of unanswered questions about rent stabilization, rent control, and so I would encourage further study with the caveat that we not, as Supervisor Tessier said, invest a lot of time and energy at this point on a staffing plan and budget needed for implementation and those kinds of things, but rather, can we, you know, get some fundamental questions? Because we receive information on one side, we receive information on the other side, and I don't know if there are academic studies about this matter, what are the long-term economic impacts of rent stabilization and rent control? I'd like those questions answered before I see staffing plans and budgets for implementation. The other thing that I would like to encourage us to look at is the apartment association mentioned the other day, a lot of really, I think, incentive-based ideas to maybe arrive at the same sort of destination. And I mentioned one earlier, which was the registry board, but there were a number of other ideas, and I think Redwood City has talked about a positive incentives-based program, and maybe we could look across America to see what exists in those areas and work with others to try to get the very best practices from that angle, before we spend a lot of time and energy on staffing plans and budgets, be my perspective.
We have, we have 11 items on our, on our white paper, and I think the majority of them are really good and really workable and would be acceptable, and so I would prefer to spend all of our resources on those, because I think that they would have more, more, more bang for the buck for us to implement at some point, than I would not spend a lot of time on item number two.
Did you get the vote?
You know, I, I.
The direction that I'm hearing from your board is that you would like to do, us to do a little more work on this issue, but not a lot of in-depth work, and you would like us to come back with some specific numbers, and you'd like us to research the economic impacts, and also look at alternatives that might be more incentives for the landlord community, and we can come back to you with a short response. I don't think we invest a lot of time and energy in this, but we provide to answer the questions you posed.
I think that's well said.
So let's go to number three.
Okay, thank you.
The third recommendation has to do with 21 elements. Should recall, your, your board actually honored the 21 elements a few months ago, and it's, for those who don't know it in the audience, it's a, it's a collective effort of the 21 jurisdictions, the 20 cities in the county, for planning, and particularly planning around housing and, and community development. And the, it's been supported primarily by CCAG, the Department of Housing in the county, and then the cities pay a small subscription as well. And with consultants, we're able to join together and in a really efficient way, complete two rounds of housing elements. This most recent round is all due to the state as we speak, so those are, they're all gone or on their way, and those have been very successful. It's been a groundbreaking project within, within the state. And the past year, 21 elements has also been working on the NEXUS studies, and it comes up in our linkage fees, which we'll be getting to as a further recommendation later on. And the commercial and residential linkage fees have a lot of requirements in terms of demonstrating scientifically, if, as, as much as possible, the linkage between increased needs for housing and compared with commercial and residential development. So those are being completed, most, the majority of jurisdictions in the county use 21 elements for that. And so now that all of the state deadlines have been met, all the housing elements adopted for the next eight years, the, it's time to implement them. And each of the housing elements, including our counties, of course, have lists of actions by the county or the city that would encourage the development of more housing. Many of the things we're talking about today, including zoning changes and incentives and, and other sorts of things, identification of sites that are possible for building. So we, what we want to do is actually, the funding for 21 elements is through June. It's, it's been extremely reasonable, and we would, we're recommending that we find a way to continue the work with the 21 elements consultants, with a subscription from the cities, but support from, from the county, and so that the implementation work now of the housing elements continues of, with all 21 elements working together. In our field, you know, you know, unlike health, or, which is health for the whole county, you know, when we get into housing and planning, it's for each jurisdiction. So 21 elements is the way that all 21 jurisdictions have been at the table month after month for several years now. We'd like to be able to continue that and look at a proposal of what that would mean, what it would cost, and so on.
Continue funding.
Yes. Five, continue fundings.
Good afternoon, President Graham, members of the board, Mr. Malpe and Mr. Byers. Recommendation four is with regard to promoting second units, which are sometimes referred to as granny or in-law units, and they provide an important source of lower-cost housing within the county. However, they're not always easy to, or affordable to construct due to factors such as design and construction costs, zoning and parking requirements, and other regulatory barriers. In order to overcome some of these barriers, the planning and building department will be updating the zoning regulations in a manner that eliminates public hearing requirements for second units as required by state law and the county's housing element. What we're recommending today are some additional ways that we can streamline the review process and reduce costs through a second unit program that would provide pre-approved design templates for second units. This would eliminate the need for property owners to pay for architectural plans and would minimize uncertainties regarding the acceptability of such plans. Other components of the recommended second unit program include the preparation of a guidance manual that provides a clear and simple explanation of relevant requirements and procedures, a financing program to help cover permitting and construction costs, and a publicity campaign to inform property owners of available resources. I'd be happy to answer any questions. I look forward to your input.
I would say yes, with this recommendation.
Yes, I just have one quick question. You mentioned the Santa Cruz program. How long has that been in effect, and has it been successful?
I don't know the duration. I have heard anecdotally it's been successful, and I'd be pleased to bring back more information on that. We will need to come back to you with the details of this as part of our upcoming budget, and so at that time, I'll be prepared to provide that information.
Thank you.
I did a little bit of concern for it, that those areas that are design review, but other than that, I think it's, I think it's a good idea.
Well, I think one of the biggest deterrents to secondary units has been design review and what they looked like, and so I think having a pre-approved design plan will really, so I'm very much in support of this.
Support.
Support as well.
Partly as a result of the regulatory barriers to second unit construction, many secondary dwelling units have been constructed without permits. Recommendation five involves simplifying the process for legalizing these units and ensuring their safety. Specifically, staff recommends that the board direct the planning and building department to develop a second unit amnesty program that waves or modifies certain regulations that interfere with the ability to legalize unpermitted second units, such as those regarding parking, setbacks, and lock coverage. The proposed program would also provide financial assistance to help cover legalization costs in the form of permit fee subsidies and low-cost rehabilitation loans that can be used to address necessary building and fire code requirements. In order to qualify for such assistance, property owners would need to agree to a deed restriction that requires the second unit to remain affordable for a specific amount of time. That concludes my presentation on that recommendation.
Go down that way. We have the units, we want them to be safe, and so I think this is, makes sense to me.
I guess the choice is implement or study, or, or no. And I guess I'm leaning toward implement, but I also am concerned about the safety aspects and what gets permitted and what doesn't, but I'm assuming all that will come back.
Absolutely.
Okay.
Yes.
Yes, and, you know, Daly City did this a long time ago, so there's, there is a plan in place that you may want to take a look at, it was very, very successful, and it really was all about safety. That's what started.
I think San Mateo has one also.
Yes.
Okay.
Number six.
Thank you. Recommendation six seeks to facilitate the construction of small houses in existing urban areas with small lots, among other reasons, because small houses are typically more affordable than larger ones. This recommendation is similar to the recommendation four, which promotes second units, in that it would involve the development of a pre-approved design template for small houses that would reduce the costs and uncertainties involved with the design and permitting process. It would also provide secondary benefits through the use of sustainable materials and low-impact, energy-efficient designs that complement the character of existing neighborhoods. complement the character of existing neighborhoods.
I've got a question here. It seems to me this is promising, but we'll need some study. For example, on a lot today where we put a single-family home, now under this program, is the idea to put three mini houses?
No, the idea would not be to increase the density, but rather to provide an incentive for the developer of that property to construct something more modest and affordable. I think that there is an underlying economic incentive for property owners to maximize the square footage of the buildings that they build now for purposes of return, and I think if we can really facilitate the process and make it cheaper for them to move forward, that the option of constructing something that's not maxed out to the limits is more attractive.
Yeah, I guess, I'm still trying to get my head around it, in that, of course, as we know, it's the land price that, you know, is so extraordinary, and that's what drives developers. To make developers do anything affordable, they have to put a lot of units in, typically want to go up, typically residents don't want to go up. So I'm not sure if this helps, if it's, you know, and if it's creating any more units necessarily. I mean, maybe I think this one is one probably more controversial, because I think the way it would work is if you stick these little homes in really small lots in places where we haven't wanted to put homes before, or, you know, you did put two or three in a lot, and of course that would generate all the controversy about parking and congestion and neighborhood resistance. So, you know, I don't favor it if it's...I think it has to promote density to make it worth studying. Otherwise, I'm not sure what we get from it.
Thank you.
Can I ask a question on this one? Would this be an example of if you had a very, very small lot somewhere tucked away, that you could take and put a smaller residence on that particular lot, so you'd increase the number of homes that are available in the county, but not a teeny house on a huge lot?
That's absolutely correct. Yeah, we have a large number of substandard lots, particularly on the coast, and the idea here would be to make those substandard lots more developable with appropriately sized homes.
See, that's where I thought you were going with it. So that helps me understand it. I mean, I think that's a good idea. I mean, we'll get a lot of people hollering at us because they won't want to have a house on a substandard lot. I mean, that's, but I think it's a good idea.
What happens, though, like on the coast that Steve was talking about, is that you'll have houses that are on 50-square-foot frontages on both sides, and then you have this little teeny posted stamp of 25-square-foot, and that's essentially, you know, those houses end up as empty lots.
I get you.
So a small house there actually makes a lot of sense.
I have a question also. Did you consider multifamily unit, small unit development in this category?
We have not, but I think that is certainly something that we could look at as we bring this back to you.
I mean, they're beginning to be developed in other cities, cities of a more dense than we are, but...
Yeah. President Grun is probably kind of getting at that in the same way, in that, you know, we're reading about San Francisco where they're building buildings that are occupied by small, very small rental units that are now, that are cheaper for people, but it causes a lot of density, you know. So, yeah, so instead of doing three stories, we could do two stories and put the same number of people in there.
That may be attractive in San Francisco. I'm not so sure that those little tiny units are exactly the same as Samatyo County. We don't really have the, we're not San Francisco, but they can be smaller, but they're not going to be the same thing for San Francisco.
I would submit, though, with what you look at was happening down here in Redwood City, I think there's going to be a lot of people who would love that often, like box-to-box people, but anyway.
I think we should take a pass at it. I think we should take a look at it.
Okay.
You guys voted?
Yes.
Yes. I have an announcement to make before we move to the next one. We're really sorry that we're not allowed to set up chairs out in the lobby directly behind here, but there is an overflow room in room 101 at 455 County Center that now has chairs in it and a TV to watch, and that's go out here through the security exit, across the quad, and that's the other office building. Okay. Number seven.
Good afternoon, Supervisor. Did we want to proceed, or did we want to just go through? Okay, thank you. Good afternoon. I'll be talking about the no-net loss policy and the affordable housing overlay zones. And as the name implies, a no-net loss policy is essentially a policy that's aimed at ensuring that the county's existing stock of affordable housing does not diminish due to conversion, due to demolition, due to replacement with market rate units. There are a couple of ways to get at that. The county could put the onus on the developers and the property owners by restricting the ability to convert or demolish existing affordable units, or by mandating that property owners and developers who do convert or demolish units have to replace them on a one-to-one basis or contribute to their replacement. On the other hand, there is the option that the county take the onus and specifically target funding in order to ensure that we do replace those units. And so that would just be a policy measure where we track the existing affordable housing stock, and as it is at risk or as it is converted, we ensure that we are contributing funds to replace those units. And various jurisdictions have taken one or the other sides of those. You can also have a hybrid approach that has components of either strategy. And of course, in any of those, whichever direction you take, there are a lot of nuances to how you can implement that. So what our recommendation is for this one is that we do go back and do further research. We look at the best practices. We look at what other jurisdictions have done and what the outcomes have been, and report back to the board with what we think the appropriate strategies are.
I think that's appropriate, because my concern is if you had a dilapidated building, and you have to tear it down and rebuild, it's going to cost you a lot more to rebuild it, and then to have rents that are super low. Someone's got to help out with that if we want to keep the no-net loss, which you'd like to. But I'd like to know more about how people have done that. You're not going to get too many people rebuilding if they, you know, can't afford to rebuild it with those rents.
I'm in favor of the no-net loss policy, but I forgot one thing. We were talking about small houses in San Francisco with my good friend Supervisor Plante. I actually want to have small houses option for farm labor housing.
How about number seven?
I'm in favor of a no-net loss policy.
Dave? Okay, five yeses. Number eight.
And number eight is affordable housing overlay zones. And essentially, this is a flexible zoning district that can be layered on top of the existing zoning in a given area, and that provides additional incentives for developers to produce additional affordable housing. And this would go on top of the county's existing density bonus ordinance and provide incentives over and above that density bonus ordinance for additional affordable housing. And some of those incentives can be very similar to some of the incentives we've been talking about for these other programs: reduced fees, permit streamlining, financial incentives, additional density, additional height. And the recommendation in this case is to direct staff to develop a template affordable housing overlay zone for North Fair Oaks and to bring that back for consideration by the Planning Commission and by the Board of Supervisors.
Do you want to start, Warren?
Yes.
Yes, okay.
Yes.
Say yes.
Yes.
Number nine.
Great. Number nine. This is actually more of an informational item, something that we need to keep our finger on the pulse of as we look at some pending potential legal developments coming out of California Supreme Court that may impact our inclusionary housing ordinance. We currently, as has been noted, have an inclusionary housing ordinance that's there at section 7908 at Sec. of our Ordinance Code. And what it requires, just in very broad terms, is that developments that create a certain number of units, five or more, dedicate at least 20% designated for extremely low, very low or moderate income households. Our ordinance, on its face, currently applies both to units for sale or for rent. I'll have more to say about both those things in a couple seconds. So again, the pending case that I want to talk about is this California Industry Association versus the city of San Jose. The association in this case had challenged San Jose's inclusionary housing ordinance based on a lack of a proven nexus between the inclusionary housing requirements and the particular, you know, sort of the particular need for affordable housing. Again, a lack of a nexus. Bill had talked earlier about Nexus studies, and that may be something we want to refer to in a second, but that was the challenge. The trial court agreed with the association, said, hey, you haven't proven a nexus. The city appealed to the Court of Appeal, which is sort of our intermediate level of court here in California, which agreed with the city, and said, hey, you don't need to show a nexus. It's enough to exercise your police power to impose inclusionary housing ordinances. That matter then was appealed to the California Supreme Court where it currently sits and has sat for some time. As I've already given you sort of what the California Court of Appeal said, there are at least a couple of possible resolutions that come out of the Supreme Court. One would be to affirm the Court of Appeal decision, i.e. you can use your police power for inclusionary housing. You don't have to prove a nexus. Another distinct possibility is that the California Supreme Court finds that you need to establish a nexus between the inclusionary housing ordinance and the need for affordable housing. If, in fact, that occurs, it would be relevant for us to bear in mind that there's a Nexus study that actually, I guess, is completed, and almost, I'm sorry. So the Nexus study is pending, and one of the things that, you know, we expect will be looked at is sort of this nexus between the need for affordable housing and an inclusionary housing ordinance, and we would be looking at that in the context of our inclusionary housing ordinance. The other thing I'd note is that our inclusionary housing ordinance currently speaks to rental housing. This has been pursuant to the Palmer decision, which Bill spoke about earlier, has been preempted by the Costa-Hawkins Act. We're going to have to clean up our ordinance anyway to deal with our references to rental housing, which are no longer relevant or enforceable. So our recommendation is, of course, we do this anyway, but continue to monitor the Supreme Court's handling of the San Jose decision I was just talking about, and once we have that decision, draft any required changes to the county ordinance and bring back to the appropriate authorities, including yourselves, for consideration.
I have a question. Could you just remind me, what is our percentage inclusionary zoning requirement?
Twenty percent.
Twenty? So we're the high end of that. I mean, it's probably as high as they are.
I think it was 15 in the city of Samatyo.
A typical range is like 10 to 30%.
Yeah, maybe even higher, okay.
Yes.
Yes.
Great, thank you.
Five yeses.
Got it. So the other matter that I was going to discuss this afternoon is a recommendation to adopt a legally defensible residential impact fee policy or set of policies. Residential impact fees, these are fees that are levied on new development to cover sort of the infrastructure, facilities, externalities that really result from development. Importantly, these sorts of impact fees are exempt from Prop. 218, Prop. 26. They fall outside the scope of the ordinary voting requirement that would apply to other kinds of fees and taxes, for example. They are, however, covered by the California Mitigation Fee Act. The kinds of fees we typically see that are familiar to us are school impact fees, impact fees for parks, things like that. There are limits, however, constitutional, sort of Fifth Amendment-related restrictions on impact fees that can be imposed. Nolan v. the California Coastal Commission, again, speaks to sort of a notion of a nexus that I was talking about earlier. There's got to be a nexus between the fee that you propose to impose and the particular problem you're trying to solve, and that's really what the U.S. Supreme Court held in the Nolan decision. Along similar lines, in the Dolan, similarly named, but a different case, requires a rough proportionality between the fee you propose to impose and the anticipated impact of the project. And what we need in order to impose any kind of an impact fee is some sort of objective evidence with respect to proportionality, and frankly, with respect to nexus. So one of the things that we were hoping to do as we move forward is to analyze the 21 Elements Nexus study, to see what kinds of nexus can be drawn between the, you know, development in the county, whether we're talking about residential, commercial, and the need for affordable housing. And so it would be our recommendation, and subject to your approval, to go ahead and analyze the 21 Elements Nexus study when we have it in June, and present the results to you all with an outline for any particular impact fees that we believe would be defensible on the basis of that Nexus study.
Just a quick question, Mr. Niplin.
Yes, sir.
Is that the same thing as the Redwood City's conversation about community benefit program?
No.
Programs? It's different. How is it different?
The community benefit program has created a special district for the downtown businesses who are together paying for additional services like street sweeping. This is a fee for developers.
Thank you.
Okay. Yes?
Yes.
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 Five yeses.
So the last one that's here is expanding and promotion of shared housing, and your board actually dealt with some of this in this morning's Measure A discussion. It's one of the parts that will be subject to an RFP, could include this. Basically, we have spoken a lot with, you know, the agency that handles much of the, basically does our home sharing program in this county, and as you may, as you probably know, there are, I think the current statistics are 10 applicants for every opportunity of a shared home. And it has to do with marketing, for one, helping people who would be wanting to share their homes to know that there is a safe way to do this, you know, and ultimately means bringing a stranger into your house. People have to know that people are screened, that it's safe, that the agency is ready to help with the, to step in and make sure things go smoothly, and they've had a long, long history of success at that. So, and I would just add, sometimes we've kidded in the Department of Housing Office that, subject to this, if somebody said to us, you have to create 300 units of new housing by next month, or else, this is about the only way you could do it. You could suddenly try to expand the home sharing program. So with that, that is actually, there's a Measure A proposal for $300,000 for hip housing to implement this recommendation. It was in the summary this morning, I think, on the Measure A actions. Events are overtaking us in our white papers.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, okay. So we're going to, now we'll take a break, and please, about 10 after 3:00, and we're going to take public comment when we return from the break. So if you haven't filled out a slip that looks like this, please do that during the break. We have no official action. We have just simply directed staff on the 11 items that they have brought forward to us, that we would like more information, or we would like a plan, and then we will take action at a later time. So I just want to let you know that no votes have been taken today. After our period of public comment, we'll let staff know whether we want to change anything we've asked them in the first place, or add to what we've asked, or leave it as is. So I don't want anyone to think that their public comment is not going to be listened to in any way. And now I was going to call a speaker, but our clerk still has the sheets. Here we go. Thank you. We're going to have two minutes today, and I know that's, to many of you, not an extra-long time, but I'm really going to ask you to... long time, but I'm really going to ask you to try to do it in two minutes. We have about 50 or 60 speaker cards. We want to hear everybody, but we also want to make sure that we're not here past the dinner hour. So, we'll begin with Pilar Lorenzo Campo. Then we will go to Michael Lane and Naomi Silverstein.
My name is Pilar Lorenzo Campo and I am here on behalf of the nonprofit Housing Association of Northern California, or NPH for short. NPH, in case you're not familiar with our organization, for more than 35 years, we've provided technical assistance, helped shape policy, and done research on best practices around affordable housing. Our goal is to increase the number of affordable homes that we have across the region. We work at the local level, at the regional level, as well as we work with state legislators to create solutions to our affordable housing crisis. I want to commend the board and the staff for the work that they've done on the white paper. I also want to thank the board for directing staff to do more in-depth study on a number of strategies that I think are particularly important to increasing the affordable housing stock that we have today. I want to speak to two of the strategies, two of the three most critical components that Mr. Lowell had identified in order to increase affordable housing. Number one, the availability of land. Number two, the availability of financing for affordable housing. As you are already aware, lots of cities have started to adopt impact fees and so we're looking forward to the county taking action when the time comes to actually review the nexus studies and adopt commercial linkage fees and housing impact fees to increase production. I also do want to say that new legislation, AB 2135, actually provides additional tools for the city to actually see if it's possible to identify publicly held land owned by special districts for affordable housing. In my last 18 seconds, I want to say that I sent a number of resources to Peggy Jensen this morning, and on behalf of NPH, we look forward to working with the board and with staff to make these strategies a reality in the county. Thank you.
Thank you. Michael Lane, Naomi Silverstein, and Nancy Mangini.
President, groom, and supervisors, Michael Lane with the nonprofit Housing Association of Northern California, and the newly elected Chair of the Board of Directors for the Housing Leadership Council of San Mateo County. Really appreciate staff's work on this and your guidance and leadership on this issue, on this crisis that we're facing in the county. A lot of key strategies have been laid out. Today, we'd like to work with you on those that have been laid out, and my colleague Pilar also spoke about that. I'd also like to put on the table the potential for a countywide housing bond for San Mateo County, November 2016, which would be for multifamily housing, but also for your down payment assistance program and for workforce housing. So, a comprehensive package that we could rally folks around and work with you and county council on what that structure might look like and the Hart Housing Trust as well. We have a JPA in place. Go out and get the incorporated cities to support us on that and put that before the voters and really ramp up what the trust is able to do and the county with a 200 to 300 million dollar bond. We know that the city and county of San Francisco will be going forward first this November and provide some momentum for a model here that we'd like to work with you on and see what those logistics might look like and really ramp up that funding and really address the crisis at the scope that it needs to be addressed. So, I'd be glad to work with you on that. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Naomi Silverstein, Nancy Mangini, and Diana Tharp.
Hello. And first of all, thank you very much for studying this need. Let me explain why an 82-year-old lady is here to talk to you. At least 45 years ago, I was part of a group that got together that was called the California Housing Coalition. Our need was basically to make sure people in legislative area were attending to our needs for low-income housing and tenants' rights. I can't believe that so many years have gone by and now it seems like the problem is expanding and it still isn't solved. I'd like to urge you, and I don't know if you have this, even though I have a master's in public administration, but if you have a lobbyist for the county, I would hope that you would have that lobbyist go to work in the state and in the federal government to get sufficient funds available. This has become a big crisis. There are people of low and middle class that would like to be able to go to work in the morning and not have to get up at 5:00 in the morning to travel to our county to go to work. And that's because they can't afford housing here. I don't know what else to say, except I'm very proud of you all for really tackling this. It's something that's been missing for a long, long time. And one last suggestion, how about a law, either at the state or the federal level, that would require major developers and corporations to provide some kind of tax donation to keeping our level of housing at a level that we need? Thank you.
Thank you. Nancy Mangini, Diana Tharp, and Bonnie Doherty.
Good afternoon. I want to compliment you on your common sense today because there's an awful lot of emotion running on this issue. I come today to speak as a senior citizen. I'm 68 years old. I was able to retire last year because I own a small rental unit that has eight units in it. I keep my apartment house well below market because I rent primarily to seniors. I'm senior, they're senior. What I can get from my unit allows me to retire. What the affordable housing they get from me keeps them in their housing. If rent stabilization or rent control, which is what it actually is, becomes a reality in this county, myself and almost every senior owner that I know is going to sell. We just can't deal with the extra regulation and the inability to increase our rents when operating costs go up. You asked for an academic study, Supervisor Slocum. I presented you with one that's based on national economists' outcome for what happens to rent control. It's counterintuitive. You put rent control in and you reduce the housing stock that is already affordable because of the fear factor of good owners who are trying to keep rents low. I want you to understand, this is a senior issue in a county that is aging rapidly. There are more of us seniors both controlling housing and renting housing. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Diana Tharp, Bonnie Doherty, Paul Stewart.
Good afternoon. As you can see, I'm a very senior San Mateo County income property owner, and I maintain my buildings very, very well. My buildings are older. They're in the 20, 25-year range. We're coming up on roofs, windows, every surface. I rent to families. My rents are significantly under today's current market, or most of them are. And if rent control were to come in, I assure you that most investors will shy away from San Mateo County income property. There is talk of a split rule property tax at the state level, and if that goes in, my property taxes will double because of the age of the buildings and my being under the Prop 13. With an inability to raise rents to compensate for that, I will sell. And I would sell probably anyway if rent control were instituted because I do not want to deal with the vast bureaucracy and the regulations that would be heaped upon me. I can invest elsewhere and not have to deal with it. My buildings will go to owner-users and the housing stock will be therefore reduced. Thank you.
Thank you. Bonnie Doherty, Paul Stewart, and Janet Davis.
My name's Bonnie Doherty, and I'd just like to say that without just cause eviction ordinances and stabilization of rents for the entire county, there seems to be no immediate help for the current renters. While this session has been very uplifting, there's a lot of long-term things in the pipeline, but there's a lot of us that worry month to month and year to year whether we can afford the rent increases we're getting. We're not saying that landlords shouldn't be able to increase the rents. That's a given. We know prices go up for everything. But I'd like to know how many landlords or corporate entities and are just here for financial gains and figures for their stockholders. So, when you mention incentives for the landlords, I'm just wondering what kind of incentives you're talking about. So, I think we, the renters, still need some kind of assurance that their rent isn't going to go up $600, $800 a year, that there's some kind of cap that could be put on depending upon the cost of the living.
Thank you. Paul Stewart, Janet Davis, and Colt Reimer. Janet Davis, Colt Reimer, Tom Lindbarger.
Thank you. One of the problems in North Fair Oaks that I know of are the slumlords. These are people who live in China, Brazil, Atherton, or a mansion in San Francisco. They buy up cheap and they don't care anything about the property. They just jack the rents up to just unconscionable levels. And the county is missing out on so many opportunities. There's buildings that have not paid taxes in six years. The county could go and negotiate with the owner about that and get a place for Habitat for Humanity or for some other person or entity. That's 133 Dump Barton, which is a dump and should be raised. There's a place at 2555 El Camino that was a brothel. That has been a drug place. The sheriffs have arrested three people in the last week. That should be raised and something put in there for people. There's a property at 2740 Blenheim that burned down, and the owner had no insurance. There's no construction going on there. That place has garbage piled right up by the sidewalk. There's all kinds of places in North Fair Oaks that if the county did its homework, they could take advantage of those underused, misused, or abused properties and find places for decent people to live. And the other problem is code enforcement. No developer is going to come in and spend good money if the place is a hellhole. Code enforcement needs to get really on the ball and clean up some of the places in collaboration with the sheriff. Thank you. That's all.
Colt Reimer, Tom Lindbarger, and Ron Dubois.
Thank you for listening today. I'm a disabled veteran. I served in Vietnam. When I went off to Vietnam and while I'm at the VA hospital, I don't know any soldier that said I served in the war and suffered and came back, and especially those who didn't come back, in order to provide for those who have money, in order to have a society based on wealth, in order to neglect those who need us the most. That wasn't what was talked about. That's not the society I grew up in and it's certainly not what I served for. Yet, that is a society that has evolved in recent times. As a veteran, I still feel compassionate. Veterans that I outreach to in the hospital and other places still feel the same. We are still compassionate. The fact that we have so many veterans that have been living on the street because they don't get, they can't afford housing, they have a hard time getting the help they need, they need to be here near these hospitals to get that help. Otherwise, you cannot rehabilitate. I went through it all early after Vietnam. It was hard, but I did succeed and I paid off. I became a productive citizen throughout my life. I own my property. That's what we want in society. Neglecting people and letting them go by the wayside does not work. A healthy society goes back to the founding fathers where they believed, in the Constitution, provide for the greater welfare is how you build a society that, for the long run, functions. That's what we need. That's what we should be here for. Those thousand people that we're talking about, I mean, those thousands of houses we're talking about, it's not a small amount. The county influences the cities, just like the state influences the counties, just like the federal government influences the states. When you set a policy, you're going to have some influence. Those thousand people are the ones that are to be provided for under that greater welfare concept. So, please, think about this. This idea that we have to have limited cost rises does work and I thank you for listening. Thank you.
Thank you. Tom Lindbarger, Ron Dubois, and Diane Zermino.
You've heard from stakeholders today, but there's a lot of people you haven't heard from. The thousand people who left this county last year because their rents went up and there was nowhere else to move with the money they had, those people are not here. They're not stakeholders. The, the problem is, is money is controlling too much of the situation and we depend on the county to set the stage for actions we hope that the cities will take. And one of those is rent stabilization. I've talked to more people, because I wear this shirt and it gets people's attention, who are telling me their rents are going up $500, $800. And they say, we're not moving to another building. We're moving to another place. We can't live here. If they have jobs here, it means that they're spending three or four hours on the road every day. That's less time for their family. Their children are uprooted from the schools that they've been going to here and moved somewhere else. My children and my children's children can't live where I live. This is crazy. And I think we're depending on the county to set the standard and say, we need rent stabilization. This is, in part, the answer, and it should be followed. And there's another reason why rent stabilization is a good idea, and that's because usually older buildings, because of Jarvis Gandon, because when they're purchased, are often paying very little tax. Menlo Park has one store that is paying less than 10% tax as the other stores because it's Jarvis Gandon. And the people who own that store live in Florida. It is not particularly good for the community. So, we need some rent stabilization. We need North Fair Oaks to maintain and have a diverse culture like it has now. We do not want San Mateo County to be a gated community just for the wealthy. I do not want my EMT worker who comes out to help me being on the road for four hours before he gets there and tired before he does his job. Thank you.
Ron Dubois, Diane Zermino, Linda Lopez.
I'm a small property owner, half a building in Belmont. In my dispute your figures, I'm, the one-bedrooms are in the 12s and 13s and the 2s and the 16s, and I take half a month's rent in deposit. My suggestion would be to have a blanket addendum that you could send out from the board to property owners in San Mateo County suggesting a three-year lock-in for tenants with a 5% or 6% increase so that they know what they're going to be paying or it can't go increase. There's going to be one increase per year. It's going to, it's just something that you could send to us that we could pass on to our tenants that we, in turn, could give back to you so that you can see that at least they're covered for that period of time. As far as your 2,000 units, in San Francisco, there's 179,000 units under rent control, paying 37, I pay 30, I have a building up there paying, I pay $37 a unit. So, that's $6,623,000 that goes to the rent board. The rules, why I am here is because these are the rules and regulations that apply to me for one unit in San Francisco. In order to get a $20, $23.66 pass-through, this is what it took me. 13 months, 126 pages, and four meetings. It should be a legal Fair Employment Act. That's what this turns out to be. What I'm telling you, what I'm asking you to understand is that, in the end, if you take in rent stabilization, you will be punishing the people that do not need to be punished, people that are good landlords, people that take care of their tenants, and it will reward people.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Linda Lopez, Malcolm Lee, and Joshua Hug.
Hi. My name is Linda Lopez, excuse me, and I live in North Fair Oaks. I want to, I want to cover three points really quickly. I absolutely hope that you continue to study the option of rent stabilization. Rent stabilization is critical to North Fair Oaks community, to my community. We're 51% approximately renters, and it's almost, it's actually higher on the renters versus the homeowners in North Fair Oaks. versus the homeowners in North Fair Oaks. Predominant young families, seniors. If you can continue to look at what those incentives could be for owners, but we need to provide our families with a sense of security. I also want to touch on rehabilitation programs. North Fair Oaks has some of the oldest housing units in unincorporated San Mateo County. Over 30% have been built, have been built over like 60 years. My family home was built in 1937, so that's about what? I don't know, 78 years, 78 years old. I would like to see and support an option to strengthen the rehab portion of your whole package. Rehab assistance will sustain and maintain keeping people in their homes. And how can we expand those programs to make sure that they cover rental units? I think that the property managers need to be held more accountable to making sure that they're utilizing rehab assistance programs in the county. And also the code, code enforcement piece. There again, the renters do make up 51% in North Fair Oaks, and we need to promote the safety, health, and regulations with more stronger code enforcement. Thank you very much.
Malcolm Lee, Joshua Hug, Kate Comfort-Harr.
My name is Malcolm Lee. I'm a property owner, a small property owner in Millbury and in South San Francisco. The, as a property owner, the, I, I also brought my colleagues who said, who was sitting next to me, that we always run into each other where we go to the building and clean up every day, if not every day, maybe every other day. Now, the, with, if we were to introduce a rent stabiliz, rent control, then what would happen is this. The property value will go down and a lot of property owners will be out of San Mateo County, and obviously the tax from property value will go down, and that will inadvertently impact our school system in San Mateo County. One thing that I would like to point out to you is if you look at the San Mateo County, the homeowners are not enjoying 10% cap rate. They barely enjoying less than 3% cap rate, by which I meant is if you were to put your money and, and invest it in a property with all cash without any, any mortgage, you will only gain less than 3% of the, of the, of the return. So homeowner, homeowner in San Mateo County, they're not making money. Any rent control, any rent stabilization is going to hurt the homeowners in San Mateo County. One other thing that I'd like to point out is if we ever want to, the, the promote affordable, it should not come from the small homeowner like us. It should come from big corporation. Look at Toyota. Toyota, they have Toyota Village where all the employees live. Just like earlier, someone was talking about Google was going to build the affordable rent, affordable rental unit so that the employees can live close to work. So I would urge the board to consider the subsidy come from the big corporation, not from a small owner like us. Thank you.
Joshua Hug, Kate Comfort-Harr, and Michelle Beasley.
Good afternoon, members of the board, President Groom. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. My name is Josh Hug. I'm the program manager for Housing Leadership Council. And I was going to begin by talking about how dire the situation is here, but I think Mr. Lowell did a, an exemplary job describing that. I would just add two figures to that, is that according to State EDD, the projection is that 60% of our new jobs in this county will be under $50,000 per year. So they, they are starting with a high hurdle. And then on top of that, if you look at the jobs that exist today, it's been calculated that we're running about a 24,000-unit deficit for, or for workers who are making very low and extremely low income workers. And there are many of them out there. We want to commend County Manager Malby on bringing this, this item forward. We think every policy that's been identified here has utility. I think the emphasis here really is that there are no silver bullets. There is no single policy that's been brought forward or that could be forward that will solve this issue. And for the short term, for the long term, we need both production and protections. We will not meet our county's needs, our sustainable needs if we do not consider every option on the table. And I think those metrics need to be used to evaluate the policies as they are considered. Will this put us on the long-term road to success? Will this help us meet our needs today? Because if we can't do both, we're, we're going to continue having a lot of pain in the county. Thank you.
Kate Comfort-Harr, Michelle Beasley.
Hello. I am Kate Comfort-Harr, Executive Director of Hip Housing. And first, I want to say thank you for recognizing shared housing as a legitimate form of affordable housing here in, in San Mateo County. We are working really hard to help incentivize landlords and home providers to open their homes to low-income people, including doing things like bonus incentives, signing bonuses, looking at providing small loans for folks who want to rehab that would be deferred while they're renting to people who are of low income. We are also looking at doing security deposit matches and also looking at an incentive program where we would get landlords to actually voluntarily give up a unit in their buildings if they knew that that unit was being rented to someone in one of our programs who's getting case management and possibly housing subsidies, and we're working one-on-one with them. So we've already had a limited, limited amount of success with that program. These are all very new. But I'd like to also suggest a property tax incentive idea that I've had, that's a little hard to implement, but if I throw it out there, maybe somebody would, will bite. And that is, as a nonprofit housing developer, if we have a tenant that goes over 80% of AMI who living in our properties, we are charged a property tax for the amount of space that their unit occupies. Why not flip that on its ear? And for those, for profit landlords and owners who are renting to people who make less than, than 80% AMI and who are voluntarily keeping a, a rent low, why not provide them with a tax benefit? So. Anyway, that's all I got. Thanks.
Michelle Beasley, Bart Charlo, Catherine Slater-Carter.
Good afternoon. Michelle Beasley with Green Belt Alliance. Green Belt Alliance defends natural and agricultural landscapes from development while helping to create thriving cities and neighborhoods. And a key component of thriving communities is homes all can afford. First of all, I just want to thank you again for holding this study session. It's incredibly important that we have this conversation and especially consider ways we can help current tenants who are struggling today. And I also want to recognize all the good work that the county of San Mateo has done to date. I want to highlight a couple of things that were mentioned today that I think are, are fantastic, including the Countywide Tenants Rights Education and Assistance Program, the Second Unit Program, and an Affordable Housing Overlay Zone for North Fair Oaks. These are all great. I only encourage the board to consider more that can be done for tenants who are struggling today. There are many people working in this county who are earning wages at all levels. They really are the backbone of our high quality of life, and so the more we can do to ensure they can thrive in this county is important. Thank you.
Bart Charlo, Catherine Slater-Carter, and Carl, Carl Ann Young, Carly Ann Young.
You got that right. Okay, good. Hi, I'm Bart Charlo with Samaritan House. I don't think I have to tell you what we do in terms of preventing homelessness as your lead core agency, or what we do with Safe Harbor in terms of bringing the homeless back from the streets and hopefully preparing them to be able to live in the rental market. We've been very concerned about the fact that there's, there's no place for them to go when they come out of transitional shelters. And we've been looking at a concept, it's very creative, of tiny housing for this particular population for a couple of years at a time. Most of you are not really familiar, I think, with the designs of tiny housing, and it means a lot of different things. For some, it's a, you know, it's a little cabin that's barely a bed space. For others, it could be as big as a multi-story building with multi-bedroom units. So there are a lot of things that go into that rubric. We are actually looking at and trying to create a housing community of 100-plus units that would be roughly 200 to 400 square feet apiece, and they would be rental units and they're transitional. They would also include parking, and they would also include outdoor space and amenities as a community, plus programming. So this is all very possible. And when you see the designs, which I will show to you, it's remarkable what you can do. Now, I admit that tiny housing is not for everybody. If you have a large family, it's not for you. If you're looking for an investment in the traditional American dream of an appreciated asset, it's not for you. If you're looking for a big mansion, it's certainly not for you. But if you think it's not for many people, you'd be surprised. My mother-in-law lives in one of the original HUD-supported units in this county. It's actually one of the original in the United States, in 285 square feet in a beautiful little apartment complex. My 25-year-old son wishes he could move into that. That's what I got to tell you. It's possible, and I want you to really look seriously when we bring it to you at the tiny housing concept. You will be surprised at how good it is. Thank you for doing this.
Catherine Slater-Carter, Carlisle, Carly York, and then Diane Zermino.
Hi. Thank you. Good afternoon. Thanks so much for holding this. In two minutes, I'm going to speak real fast. So I'm here speaking as a community member and a landlord. And I think one of the things that's important to remember when you're talking about higher density is also the quality of life, which was, was mentioned. It means also paying attention to open spaces, neighborhood parks, and bike lanes, and all of the kinds of recreational opportunities that people in higher-density areas need. The higher the density, the, actually, there's a greater need for that. I recently sold a business. I would love to be able to take a tax deferral on that at 1031 and turn it into rental housing. I already have a number of single-family rental units, but I can't. So I'm going to be paying a significant amount of money that I could be investing in housing. I already own a number of housing, single-family houses, and we rent them to teachers, to a principal, and we keep them below the median as expressed here. And I'm very happy with that retirement income, as somebody else mentioned. So I think we need to look at ways to get more private money into the housing market, and this may be a way, and perhaps if you took a 1031, it would be with an agreement to keep it at less than 50% of the median rental rates. I support the concept of small houses. Some of you know I've been talking about small houses on small lots on the coast for at least 15 or 20 years. I think it's a very critical issue. I think microhouses are something to be looking at. One of the things that I heard briefly mentioned was having the county work with and support the landlords. Landlords, as you've heard already, are not all rich, wealthy developers. There are many people whose retirement incomes depend on this, and they need to be able to turn to the county for help when there is a bad tenant. So please support the locals. One other thought is explore the internet. Shipping crates are making fabulous housing. They're being done into apartment buildings in Europe. They're being done in Canada. They're being done all over the state. So please consider making that an allowable use. Thank you.
Carlisle, followed by Diane Zermino, followed by Shawna O'Shaughnessy.
Carlisle Ann Young, Moss Beach. I'm also a Realtor. I just, I'll try to speak fast, too. I think that any rental policy that you guys enact should exempt the one to four units typically owned by small investors. Because as Catherine Slater-Carter spoke, those people are usually not the greedy landlords. They're just trying to produce some income for retirement. San Mateo County should not expect private property owners to subsidize public housing for low-income renters. Maybe they should consider incentivizing corporate-built and-run housing complexes to include a larger percentage of affordable housing units, within the law, of course, or even standalone livable, affordable, low-income rental complexes. I'm happy to see them addressing and streamlining the second unit conversions or legalization via the amnesty program. I used to live in Daly City, and believe me, they had a lot of illegal garage units there that were catching fire, et cetera, before the amnesty program. So the benefits to that would be, A, it would help the housing shortage be reduced, and B, it helps struggling homeowners who are trying to stay in their homes with high mortgages. Five, be really careful of enacting a rental stabilization ordinance because of the creation of a burdensome enforcement infrastructure like San Francisco has. I am also a Realtor in San Francisco, and believe me, there is an entire cottage industry of lawyers, both pro-tenant as well as landlord advocacy groups, and the bureaucracy central that's created by all the laws or proposed laws that are on the ballots. It just goes back and forth like a ping-pong ball. Number six, I definitely am in favor of having small infill lots in the unincorporated area like Moss Beach or Montero. A lot of the, lots measuring 25 by 100 sit empty. While in San Francisco or Daly City, those would be considered buildable. So we do have design review out there that periodically squashes that. And also, I'm in support of the tiny house movement.
Diane Zermino, Shawna O'Shaughnessy, and Daniel Soves.
Thank you, Board of Supervisors, for holding this meeting. My name is Diane Zermino. I live here in San Mateo County. I'm speaking on behalf of myself. I am part of the North Fair Oaks Community Council and the North Fair Oaks Youth Initiative. I want to talk about my experiences being a 16-year-old youth here in North Fair Oaks. Well, there are very good programs, such as the North Fair Oaks Youth Initiative, that help students like me who are a minority here. But what is going to happen in these programs when the majority of the minorities are being moved out? It's so sad because I see moving trucks everywhere, every day, in my, just in my neighborhood because people are moving out because they can't afford it here. My parents and I have experienced abusive landowners. Yeah, so seeing good landlords like you, I wish you were mine. Being in a house where it was filled with moss, I actually developed asthma in one house, and I still live with that. I've, if you think my experiences are bad, I know students who live in like worse conditions than I did, they have to get jobs on top of everything they do just to live in a one-bedroom apartment that isn't even maintained. Sorry. When rent rises, I mean, oh my God, I'm so sorry. I just wish that something can be done. Maybe, I know that rent stabilization would hurt a lot of you, but even something like these small houses. I want to stay in this area. I have a baby brother who I want to live here and have the opportunities that I did not. Sorry, I'm so nervous. I'm, I'm sorry. In these 20 seconds, I'm just going to conclude that I hope with this session, you, the Board of Supervisors, can come up with the decision, not only for the tenants, but for the landowners, since we all have rights. And I just want a good decision that will benefit all of us. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Shawna O'Shaughnessy, Daniel Soves, and Linda Kilby.
Good afternoon, President Groom, members of the board. My name is Shawna O'Shaughnessy, and I'm the Executive Director of Rebuilding Together Peninsula, and I would like to wish you all a Happy St. Patrick's Day. But seriously, the reports and stories we have heard today are so sobering. As you all know, there is no single solution to the housing crisis that we are in. Bill mentioned the importance of keeping San Mateo County a place for all ages and all income levels. I couldn't agree more. I appreciate the conversation that happened today about keeping the affordable housing we had. I know that most of it was about rental units, but retaining low-income, affordable, owner-occupied housing is just as important. Preserving affordable housing is the most cost-effective tool that we have. Rebuilding Together Peninsula's work is critical to this effort. We allow seniors to age in place and to pass on their housing to their children and grandchildren. This is not theoretical. Every single year, we see more and more multigenerational households applying for our services. We see more families who are working families who are able to stay here in San Mateo County because they inherited their home. Thank you so much for taking the time today to discuss this important issue. You can see by the response today that this is something that means a lot to San Mateo County, so appreciate your time.
Thank you. Daniel Soves, Linda Kilby, David Zisser.
Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Daniel Saver. I apologize, my handwriting is not the greatest. So I wanted to first thank you all for setting the stage for this extremely important conversation and to thank the staff that worked so hard on the white paper, which I think is really tremendous. And one of the things I think that's so great about the white paper is that it does recognize that we need both production and preservation or protection strategies. Both of these things have to come hand in hand. I would note that there are way fewer, there are fewer of the protection strategies in the white paper. Really, you're looking at option one. Really, you're looking at option one and two. And I'm concerned, I think, about some of the hesitancy around rent stabilization, because I think that is a critical part of any comprehensive plan, and we need a comprehensive plan moving forward. I like to use a medical analogy here. The housing crisis is kind of like a cancer, all right? And we have people who are afflicted by this cancer, and we want to find a cure for cancer. Getting to the root cause of the problem, the supply and demand imbalance, we need to invest money in solving that long-term problem, coming up with a long-term solution. But we can't ignore the people that have the cancer now. Do you just not treat the people who are living with cancer and say, "We're just going to invest in the long-term solution, but we're not going to actually care for the folks that have this right now"? I think that it's a crude analogy, but what I'm trying to get at, I think, is the urgency and what I believe is the moral aspect of this problem and the set of solutions that we need to develop. I would note, I think the cost-benefit analysis that Supervisor Tissier brought up is a very good lens to look at this through. What I would note through the presentation is that over 12 years, the board created roughly 1,500 units. That costs tens of millions of dollars. You could pass one law that would encompass somewhere between 1,000 and 2,000 units. You could do that in one year. So I think that is a good lens, but I think it actually cuts in favor of rent stabilization. Thank you.
Linda Kilby, David Zisser, and Cynthia Wuketic.
I'm Linda Kilby from the Congregational Church of San Mateo, and we've been affiliated with Peninsula Interfaith Action, which has now merged with San Francisco Organizing Project for some time, and affordable housing has been one of our issues the whole time. I can tell from the conversations here that there's a lot of complexity there. I have attended two meetings recently, one at my church and one at Woodside Road United Methodist Church, where there were a lot of people talking about how high their rents have all of a sudden gone and what difficulty that created for them. People speaking in Spanish and English in both cases. And so I think it is a very complex issue, but I know you guys are going to be working on it. So, thank you.
Thank you. David Zisser, Cynthia Wuketic, and Jan Lindenthal.
Hi, I'm David Zisser. I'm a staff attorney at Public Advocates. We're a regional legal and policy organization. Just a few quick comments. First, although it probably wasn't your intent, it sort of seemed like some decisions were being made by this board before hearing all the useful public comment. I hope you guys will all consider carefully the recommendations from staff, the comments you're hearing from the public now, before making a final decision. This is an opportunity for the county to take leadership, to show the way for the cities. It's true that the cities need to do at least as much as what the county needs to do, but this issue is before the county right now, and there's some precedent-setting opportunities that you all have. As others have said, rent stabilization is essentially the only recommendation coming from staff that will keep people in their homes and in the community. People will continue to bleed out of San Mateo County without these types of protections. And while the production strategies are really important, we need rent stabilization, too. As Daniel just said, you have an opportunity to preserve between 1,000 and 2,000 units right now. There are some costs associated with creating that infrastructure. I think a lot of us noticed that those costs and the number of units affected, that rent stabilization was the only policy you asked those questions about. All of these policies bear some costs and incorporate only so many units. I hope that there's not a double standard attached to rent stabilization as compared to the others. The last thing I'll say is that, you know, from sort of a lawyer's perspective, displacement is arguably one of the greatest contributors to fair housing problems and segregation. That needs to stop. People will continue to leave this great area if we don't do that. Thanks.
Cynthia Wuketic, Jan Lindenthal, and Joshua Arce.
Hello, Council. My name is Cynthia Wuketic. I am from Burlingame, California. And I represent, I'm here representing the Burlingame Advocates for Renter Protection. I have a letter to deliver to you from our group I'm a member of. I'm also a renter in Burlingame, just for the record. I think there'll be enough of these for the council. Thank you. Dear Board Members, I am writing on behalf of Burlingame Advocates for Renter Protections. We are a growing grassroots group that has emerged because of a lack of tenant protections and rapid exorbitant rent increases and displacement. We protest the scheduling of a housing session on a workday in the middle of the afternoon. The great majority of renters in the county are working people and are unable to attend a daytime meeting. We ask that the meeting be quickly followed up by another session to be held in the evening to allow members of the public to have a voice in this process. Thank you. We laud the county for responding to the affordable housing crisis through its policies and actions, including the Affordable Housing Fund and contributions to developments. Unfortunately, the rental housing in the county is in overdrive, with people being economically evicted on a daily basis, initially causing displacement of the most vulnerable members of the population: seniors, disabled people, single parents, low-income, and low-income workers, but now reaching all middle-class renters, too. It is no exaggeration to say that thousands of peninsulans are at risk of being displaced. Maybe I can just go on for 30 seconds longer?
Yes, please.
Okay, thank you. We strongly encourage that the Board of Supervisors perform a diligent and speedy study of the actual truth of rent stabilization's effects and dispel the myths surrounding it. We cannot build enough affordable housing fast enough or big enough to solve the crisis. There is simply not enough time. Too many people have already suffered. Rent stabilization has to be an important and immediate part of the solution. And I personally want to encourage you to consider fair housing for all San Mateo citizens.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for your time.
Jan Lindenthal, Joshua Arce, and Carol Lamont.
Good afternoon. Jan Lindenthal with MidPenn Housing. I want to first applaud the county for the serious attention you are giving to this issue. And I think you only need to listen to all of the speakers that have come before me to know that we are sitting here at ground zero of the affordable housing crisis. MidPenn has been pleased to partner with the county and the housing authority on several of the projects that Bill Lowell mentioned earlier. And I can tell you firsthand that the Affordable Housing Funds that the county has committed to those projects made the difference to making that affordable housing happen. This level of production is both amazing and a drop in the bucket. But I can tell you that every new affordable unit that's created changes the lives of the residents who live there. With respect to the white paper, all of the recommendations that you're looking at are important, and we would support your further consideration of all of those. One point I would like to stress, to not repeat some that others have made, is with respect to the countywide NEXUS study. We would encourage you to continue to use your leadership to encourage all of the cities in the county to adopt both commercial and residential impact fees when that study is complete. A couple of ideas that aren't in the report that I wanted to encourage you to give some thought to. The first is what we call a multifamily preservation program. And it would take some of the resources that the county has available to you and use it to acquire existing multifamily rental housing to both stabilize the rents for the current residents, to reinvest in the property, and to take it out of the speculative retail, or speculative residential market. The second program I would ask you to continue to focus on is one that leverages collaborations between housing and other sectors, such as healthcare. With the strong leadership of the county, MidPenn is partnering with the county and the San Mateo County Health Plan to support frail seniors in their homes by taking some of the savings from the healthcare industry and use it to support seniors in their homes. In conclusion, I would just say that MidPenn has the privilege of working with more than 30 cities and counties in the 10 counties that we work in. And San Mateo County and the housing authority here are among the very best that we work with. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Joshua Arce, Carol Lamont, and Erica Corillo.
Afternoon, Supervisors. My name is Joshua Arce, and I am a community representative for Labor's Union Local 261. We are a labor organization that represents approximately 1,000 working men and women here in San Mateo County. And we're going through a time that's very similar to what you heard here. Our members work in the construction sector, and it's very hard to maintain their homes in the county. We are seeing, in some ways, a double hit. It's hard to get housing built. It's very hard to get affordable housing built in the county and the various cities. And it's, when it does get built, we often see that a lot of times the wages that are paid are not enough to support opportunities for our members or even really anybody who wants to stay in the county. So, and when you talk about benefits a lot of this time, forget about it. So we're getting hurt in terms of the quality of the jobs from time to time, and we're getting hurt in terms of the cost of living, because we are right there in that range that folks talked about, the under 50,000. That's right around where our members are. So we voted as a local to take a position to fully support. I want to thank Supervisor Pine and our friends, all of you. We've worked with all of you at the board over the years. But particularly in moving forward with this study, we fully support moving forward with each and every one of the elements. We support the study of rent stabilization, so we can all have the answers. Our members have spoken that they're in favor. We're all taking the hit. We fully support going forward and ask respectfully that the board do that today. Thank you.
Thank you. Carol Lamont, Erica Corillo, and Laurel Fish.
Hello, I appreciate the opportunity to address you today. I'm the former administrator of East Palo Alto's New Rent Stabilization and Just Cost for Eviction Ordinance. This is an ordinance that was adopted upon the vote of 68% of the residents of the community. And I want to tell you that every day I saw the impact it had on residents, not only in protecting them from excessive rent increases, not only in protecting them from unreasonable evictions, but in protecting their health and safety and the habitability of their homes. What we found is that particularly large landlords, not the small mom-and-pop ones, most of the complaints that we heard, the hearings that were held, found that landlords failed to address health and safety, habitability issues in residents' homes. Everything from leaky roofs, broken windows, pest, mold, mildew, broken elevators, broken windows. The ordinance protected the residents from this by declaring that a reduction in rent and services for which tenants could petition, and a hearing examiner would consider whether or not to reduce the allowable rent. And landlords learned through their pocket. That's what I learned. East Palo Alto has about 2,500 units under rent control. And I can offer you some suggestions on how to adopt an ordinance that is more efficient and effective on a complaint basis. And I will say that it has had a huge impact on protecting the lives of residents in the community, the stability of the community, the people who go to churches, who shop in the local businesses, the students in the schools. Thank you.
Erica Corillo, Laurel Fish, and Jennifer Martinez.
My name is Erica. I'm a single parent, and at the beginning of this year, I was forced to move back into my parents' home. Our studio is 1,400, which, for a person that's making $9.00 an hour, it's something completely unaffordable due to many other bills that we have besides rent. My parents live in a one-bedroom apartment. There's nine of us. All four adults were working. And in the period of six months, the rent went up $400. And as many individuals and as single parents, it's affecting many of us. We don't make the much money that many people are doing. And right now, I look at myself, and I see I'm struggling to have a home for my son. So I think about his future. If I'm struggling now, how is his struggle going to be to have a home when he's my age? I'm going to school. I'm working. There's no time for my son if I want to have a home and pay so many bills. I have to have him in daycare. I need to pay rent, and I need to pay food. I don't have a car, so I have to pay transportation. A lot of the landlords, I understand, that you guys also have your business. But what happens to us? What happens to the people that work hard, break our backs, to try to provide a better future for our kids? I just hope that you guys find a solution for everybody and that everybody is happy, because San Mateo is one of the bestest places where I know I can have a good future, and so can my son. Thank you.
Thank you. Laurel Fish, Jennifer Martinez, Pablo Morey.
Laurel Fish had to leave, so I'm Jennifer Martinez. I am the Executive Director of Peninsula Interfaith Action and now the San Francisco Organizing Project. I'm also a resident of San Mateo. And over the past five months, we've listened to thousands of low-income people across the county. We've had direct conversations with over 3,000 people in this county. And when we asked them, "What is the number-one problem you face in having a good life here?", they said to us, "Housing." Housing is the number-one thing that we face. The cost of housing, the way that housing costs are rising at an unmanageable pace. Some of us, as we have already listened to here, have faced 50%, 60% rental increases. And while we applaud and are so grateful to the board and staff for investigating this crisis, for the issues that you guys are plunging into, and we want to support all of them. Let me repeat that. We support all of them. I do want to raise the concern that if we do not investigate rent stabilization as one of the possible strategies for addressing this crisis, then we are not doing all that is possible for our communities. We are not standing up and saying that everyone who lives and tries to work here as their kids here deserves the best possible from our public, from our public offices. We believe that a rent control program or rent stabilization program can be designed in a lot of different ways. We've heard the problems of San Francisco, but it doesn't have to look like San Francisco. It can look like our way in San Mateo. It can be flexible to make sure that good landlords that are raising rents at a reasonable rate, that are doing all they can to make habitability work for people, they're not going to be affected by this, because they're already good landlords. We want to make sure that all landlords are good landlords, and a rent stabilization program would help us ensure that. We want to find ways to work with you, and we hope to do so in the future. We're going to keep on this issue, as you know. And we look forward to working with you to make sure it's successful for everyone.
Pablo Morey, Father Larry Goody, Joe Guntrun. Pablo, Joe, Rick Gettle? There it goes.
Thank you. Excuse me. Thank you. Father Larry Goody, St. Francis of Assisi Church in East Palo Alto. Excuse me. I'm here to speak on behalf of those in our community who have suffered from evictions and foreclosures, and there are many, because of the rising cost of living and the increase in rents. A while back, I imagined that there would be a tense... A while back, I imagined that there would be a tent city in front of our church. And it wasn't for the Saint Vincent de Paul Society of our county, I think we would have had a tent city in front of our church. They came in and helped so many people to be able to pay their rents when they couldn't. Our people and the low-income people of the county are the Lazarus sitting the door of the Richmond. We're sitting on a gold mine but not getting any of the gold. When I heard that the county was talking about rent control, I can't tell you how happy I was to hear that there was finally somebody that was noticing Lazarus. None of the city governments around us seem at all concerned. That janitors, gardeners, restaurant workers. And I also heard that teachers and nurses can't afford to live in our, in our part of the world. I grew up here in the county of San Mateo, Redwood City. My mom was born in the county in Redwood City. My grandpa was born in the county in Redwood City. My great, one of my great-grandpas was a county assessor. Another was a trustee in the Sequoia Unified School District. And they were immigrants, the last two. And they came from Ireland, so happy Saint Patrick's Day.
Thank you very much. Is Pablo Morey, did he, did he's, okay. Joe Guntrun? Rick Gettle?
Hi, I'm Rick Gettle. I was an eighty-three-year-old veteran. I was born and raised in San Francisco. And during the Great Depression, we had no food stamps, no, no anything. My father was selling candy bars on a corner to make money. No, we're doing jobs. Anyway, we had something, we all loved each other. Everybody helped everybody. I, I would love to live back there again, you know, if it's not the same. And now I'm down here. I raised my kids down here, I raised my grandkids, and now I'm, I helped raise my great-grandkids. Now they all had to move away from me because of the housing. So, I'm all by myself now. And what I want to know is, who really cares? Who really cares? Does Governor Jerry Brown care? Does Nancy Pelosi care? Or Barbara Boxer? You know, there's only one person I, I'm really counting on coming along. That's the Long Ranger. He cared. So, where's the Long Ranger? Where's the man on the white horse that can come and solve these problems instead of talking about them? So, help me find the Long Ranger.
Thank you. Pat Ashton, Tanya Soleil, Teresa De Laurenti. There may be some people coming from room one oh one, so we'll hold on to these. Somebody's getting up, okay. I didn't hear what she said.
That's Tanya. I am Tanya Soleil, a resident of Dock Town. I would like to make two seemingly but not necessarily contradictory comments. Number one, the criteria for vouchers does need to be further loosened. I tried to rent out my floating home to a voucher holder and was denied on the basis of the fact that my home floats. We have an opportunity to quickly create affordable housing in the Bay Area and county waters by adding marinas, allowing live-ahboards, and issuing vouchers for those that choose to live in this very green, very eco-friendly way. Point two, the other reality that we face in this area is understanding the fact that we don't have water. If we are going to allow more workers to move into this area, we all need to recognize and they need to recognize that they will be required to become extremely frugal in their use of water. At this moment, this is the real constraint. We don't have any extra water for more residents regardless of whether or not we would like to have them move here or stay here. First, we need to solve that problem because if not, we will be back and instead of it being rent that is unaffordable, it will simply be water that is unaffordable. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Pat Ashton, Teresa De Laurenti, S. Robert Gomez. Sister Christina Helsley. Michael Dear, Michael Dear D. Pierce.
Members of the Board of Supervisors, thank you for having this session today and for letting me speak. I'm Michael Pierce, I'm a resident of Foster City. I'm the chair of the board of the Saint Francis Center. I work with Sister Christina. I'm also an operator of rental housing on the for-profit side as well as the nonprofit side. I think what we need to keep searching for, and you're looking at our non-punitive solutions. Rent control's a punitive solution. It singles out one individual group of people, the people that own housing, and makes them, penalizes them, and makes them fund something that is a broad societal need. I think we need to work together as a society. If we feel we need to fund this, we should fund it in a more broad fashion. On the development side, we just need more housing. We're paying today for the lack of housing development for many, many, many years. And we tend as a society to only look at this in the peak times when the demand is really high and then we conveniently forget about it when rents fall and the economy falls apart. But this is a systemic problem that's been going on for a long time. If we adopt things like inclusionary zoning, the problem with that is it's a penalty. Again, we need to incentivize property owners to build more housing. Give them, give them credits for higher density. The big, the big beast to me in the room is NIMBYism. Well, we have many people that are coming up today and speaking about this. They don't want the housing built in their next, in their neighborhood. They don't want it built next to them. I've been going to meetings in Foster City arguing with my neighbors about adding additional rental housing in Foster City. If we, if we're going to keep having children, if we're going to keep having businesses grow, we have to get over this idea that we all need our quarter acre and our house sitting in the middle of that with all this empty land around us. We don't have a choice. We don't want to build in the hills. We don't want to fill in the bay. We need density and we need smart density. So, we've got to work together. And I think we need a dialogue with the public, both with public officials, private individuals, fighting the beast of NIMBYism. We've got to all work together to get more housing built and we've got to do it systemically going forward. When we get through this boom and into the next trough, we've got to keep building.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Daniel from Daly City.
Hi, my name is Daniel Lee. Okay, this housing crisis is a very simple matter. It's a matter, it's as, it's as simple as supply and demand. Nineteen eighty-two, I came to the United States in nineteen eighty-two, thirty-three years ago. I'm, I'm, I am, I was twenty-three years old and I lived with my one brother and one sister. We lived in the studio. And since thirty-three years, since thirty-three years ago, we, we have already had a housing crisis. So, this housing crisis is not going, is not going to go away. I think that the housing crisis should be, more housing should be built by the local government, county government, state level, or even federal level. Rent control is not a, is not a solution. Rent control would just ensure the long-term, long-term tendency. We, most of the small property owner, we save money to buy the property and this is our, and this is our future, is our future retirement. And if most of the people cannot even take care of the aging parents, how can we take care, how can the small property owner go ahead and take care of the, on the public? If you create the rent stabilization board, we have a bad experience in the East Palo Alto, it would just create an abusive manner, abusive manner from the rent stabilization board. One thing to be, okay, one thing to be noted over here is, we do not evet any tenants. We only, we only evet the tenants that don't pay the rent. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lee. David Carducci.
I heard that Bob Gomez is here.
My name is Bob Gomez and I reside in East Palo Alto, beautiful East Palo Alto, California. Thank God. I am a veteran, a senior veteran. I have lived in East Palo Alto at least past twenty-three years. I live in a fixed income. And the only reason I'm here is because of rent control. If not, I would have gone somewhere else and God knows where I'd be. Probably dead by now. And I am a person that likes people. And the only reason I'm here is because of the rent control. And I'm a model for that rent control. It works, ladies and gentlemen. It does work. If you listen to Carol Lamont, you will find out that we're doing good. Now, I voted for most of you people, but four of yous. And I like, and I voted for you because I thought you were the best people possible to run San Mateo County. Ladies and gentlemen, it's your time to stand up and see if you can produce something that will help us here in San Mateo County. You are the people, you are the man. So, let's get up and do your thing and start getting better rent control dialogues, regulations, and so forth. So, as a voter, I was not very happy with the way that the supervisory meeting was conducted today. What's this thing about not getting any information? Oh, boy. Anyways, good luck. We need all the help we can get.
David Carducci.
Thank you. My name's David Carducci. I'm one of the two housing attorneys at the Legal Aid Society of San Mateo County and I'm also the president of Foster City Little League. So, in addition to more baseball fields for our kids out there, we need, of course, all of these recommendations. I want to address three points today. Number one, in your recommendations in the white paper, countywide tenants' rights education and assistance program. It's what we're doing now and we couldn't agree more that if you're going to have laws, you have to have a system for enforcing those laws. It's why we have police, it's why we have county council, it's why we have district attorneys. So, we support having mechanisms in place to enforce the tenant protection laws that we already have in place in the county, in the cities, in the state. Number two, with respect to our Section Eight vouchers, this county has very little public housing, but we rely heavily on the Section Eight program to provide subsidized housing for the poorest among us. And as Mr. Lowell suggested earlier, there's, the increases in rent is providing heavy challenges to Section Eight tenants to find housing with their Section Eight vouchers. So, we would like to see more incentives for landlords to get back into the Section Eight program because the market is giving them the incentive to get out of the Section Eight program. We want to make it a program that, that works for landlords and the tenants. Last, with respect to rent stabilization, we just want to make the point that obviously the market is not working for the community. I see people every week that come into our housing clinics and they come to us in crisis with housing problems. And the number one problem we're seeing right now is related to the rent increases. We all know that and we look in their faces every, every day. So, the market's not working for the community. We know that when you study this, you're going to rely on objective standards. You're going to take a balanced approach to it. And the way you did with the smoking ordinance, took a balanced, scientific approach to it and we'd ask you to do the same. And the county can show leadership on this and that's worth it also.
Thank you, thank you very much. I'm going to go back and, is Pat Ashton, Teresa De Laurenti, and Pablo Moore. Okay. Antonio Avalos, Veronica Hernandez, and Carlos Long.
Estoy aquí presente para hacerles una pregunta sobre las rentas, de la alza de los precios de la renta. A veces no es tan importante, o sea, no es muy importante que se diga que sigan subir, subir las rentas, pero sí es más importante también que los dueños de los apartamentos hagan su conciencia de tener un apartamento en buenas condiciones porque no creo...
So, she's asking that the owners of the properties be aware of the conditions that the houses or the apartments that they have are in.
Por la razón de que, además de eso, pienso que más de alguno de ustedes no les gustaría vivir con ratones, con cucarachas, con los apartamentos en malas condiciones. Yo no sé si alguno de ustedes tuvo la oportunidad de ver un, un, este, una reunión que tuve con los del Canal Catorce por la razón de que el dueño de los apartamentos, cuando agarró esos apartamentos del dos mil cinco, él dijo, escriban todo lo malo de los apartamentos. Yo dijo, voy a arreglarlos. Nunca él puso un cinco para eso, nada.
She just mentions that all of you, she knows that none of you would want to live with rats or cockroaches and she just wants you all to, there's people out there living with animals like that.
Mi hermano inclusive, no sé cuántas cucarachas comió cuando se estaba cocinando, las cucarachas volaban por todos lados.
There's cockroaches flying all over the place. She's not sure how many her brother has eaten because they're all over his apartment.
Me siento impotente por la razón que viene cuatro veces al City Hall.
She's come to City Hall at least four times.
Vine a hacer reportes.
To write up a report.
No me han escuchado en nada.
And they haven't listened to anything that I've said.
Mandaron dos supervisores en el mismo día.
They sent two supervisors on the same day.
Miraron, dijeron ellos, todo está bien.
They looked around and didn't see anything and said it was fine.
Después me presenté otra vez al City Hall total para no cansarles mucho, cuatro veces. La última vez, se rompió la cañería, varias veces se rompen esas cañerías. Se sale el excremento por todos lados.
The pipes have broken various times and the sewage has drained into the house and the building. And it's horrible.
Hablé, hablé inclusive eso, se rompieron las tuberías para manchar un domingo. Según el, el del primer piso habló para la ciudad y dijeron que ellos no tenía nada que ver con eso. Okay. Entonces, el día domingo llego yo con mi hermano y veo un solo desastre por, por los tres, este, cómo se dice, donde están, los garajes. El excremento tirado por todos lados.
There was sewage all over in the garage when her and her brother arrived.
Thank you, thank you very much. We've made note of the name and address and we will contact somebody to take, to, to, to see what they, to get somebody out there.
No, imposible. No lo creo.
Impossible, I don't believe you.
No lo creo. Yo ya vi el City Hall.
We will do our best, we will do our best to get somebody to come and visit your address. Carlos Long. Fran Wagstaff.
Good afternoon, members of the Board of Supervisors. Joshua Howard with the California Apartment Association. I want to take this opportunity first to thank county staff and the leadership of the county executive for putting together a very comprehensive white paper. In my recollection, this is probably one of the very few comprehensive documents that lays out a variety of solutions to addressing affordable housing in the state of California. And I want to commend you and your staff for the leadership, so thank you for that. The Association looks forward to working with you and developing ways to ensure renters and rental property owners understand their roles, their rights, their responsibilities, and the resources that are available to them as outlined in option number one of the white paper. We also appreciate the comments by several of the members to explore best practices programs and to explore ways to increase and improve the quality of rental housing using things such as building code enforcement, rehabilitation programs, and other strategies that we can explore that would increase the quality of the housing stock and maintain affordability and partnership between the landlords and the residents and the county. There are some strategies I think will be worth consideration in your future deliberations, some of them are mentioned already. First is looking at a revenue bond, looking at an ongoing, sustainable, local source of funding for affordable housing that the state can't take away would be very valuable for San Mateo County. You can use that to build more housing, to provide additional rental assistance, and other mechanisms to promote affordability. In addition, would encourage you to look at your land, look at all your vacant land in the county and identify opportunities to build housing in partnership with the private sector and the public sector. In addition, Hip Housing's executive director mentioned the idea of a tax incentive for landlords who offer their properties at below-market rate rents. We look forward to exploring that further with Hip Housing in the coming weeks and would hope to bring that back to you as something we can consider. Again, we appreciate your leadership and look forward to working with you.
Thank you. Fran Wagstaff.
Good afternoon, I would like to congratulate the board and the staff on an excellent report. I have some experience in this area as I served as president of Mid Peninsula Housing Coalition for 25 years and had the privilege of working with this county, which I would say my experience was absolutely the best to work with. In order not to repeat the things that were said, I just want to some, I just want to say that I support this report, I support all of it, including the rent stabilization part because we need some quicker solutions than development affords. While development is great and it's a long-term solution for poor people, we really do need some relief for tenants, it's a real crisis situation. I would like to comment on one specific part of the report and that's the zoning overlay since I've had a lot of personal experience with that in other cities. In Mountain View in particular, we had some real success with zoning overlays and I just would like to comment on what's required for zoning overlay to be successful. There were a couple of school sites that were available for sale at one point and the city put a zoning overlay over those sites, much as you're thinking about doing in Fair Oaks, and said that development on those sites had to have at least 20% affordable housing. The developers who secured those sites indicated that it just couldn't be done, they even got letters from their banks saying it couldn't be done. And the real key to the success in eventually developing those sites as affordable housing was that the council said, go back and try harder. And that happened several times and they were unwilling to accept a no for an answer. And in the end, we developed about 400 units on those two sites. So I encourage you to really pay attention to the details of how these things work and make sure that at the end I'll be here to comment on whatever is drafted because it's very important that it be drafted in such a way that it works and that it's not simply another document that doesn't get implemented. Thank you.
Veronica Hernandez, Carlos Long, Monica Olson, Ellen Haig. Monica Olson, Ellen Haig, Lisa Montehue.
Thank you for this very good white paper and I'm from Pacifica and as you know, we have...
Your name, please.
Monica Olson. And as you know, we have maybe 10 units of affordable housing, but recently our city council approved, or city planning approved 10 $4 million houses on the only open land, $4 million. However, we're, our teachers are starting at $35,000 a year and so we have lost some very excellent dedicated teachers. And so my main plea, besides congratulating you for the, all the steps that you're willing to take, is to hang on to the idea and the leadership that would help our city to see the importance of rent stabilization. That's what I see that you could do for us is to lead by having that as a priority.
Thank you. Ellen Haig. Lisa Montehue.
Good afternoon, my name's Ellen Haig, I'm a resident of San Mateo County and a member of SFOPP. It seems like you've already made your decision about rent stabilization before the public had an opportunity to comment, but I'll express my comments that I had prepared anyway. And some of the things I say, I'll probably be repeating, but I think it bears repeating. It's a pretty dire situation we're in, in San Mateo County. The steps the county is taking to address affordable housing are good and important. However, these solutions are for the long term. We are in the middle of a housing crisis, it's a crisis, an emergency for the citizens in this county. For the present, rent stabilization is the only solution. Despite the pressure from realtors, it must not be taken off the table. My son grew up in Pacifica and has had to move out of the county. He has a good job, he's a college graduate and cannot afford to rent here. So where are we going? What is going to happen to the community if the current situation of skyrocketing rents is allowed to continue? We are looking to you for leadership. Thank you.
Thank you. Christina Lee. Laura Bent.
Hi, my name is Christina Lee, I'm a small landlord who own the property in East Palado and also in Daly City and Rebel City. My, my point being a landlord of the rent control city, I want to, I want to highlight, you know, what, highlight that, you know, highlight of the rent control of East Palado. Currently, we have to pay the highest registration fee to the rent board, which is $240, $240 per unit. And then every time tenants don't pay the rent, we're trying to evet someone and like, I know some of the legal aides are here, legal aides, standbuck lawyer, they try to, you know, try to, you know, on us, just simply try to evet the tenants. And also, we have to submit too much, a lot of paperwork to rent board. And every time new tenant's moving annually, oh, we have rent increase, those are paperwork that, you know, repeated every year. And especially, you know, we don't have a good system, it's very difficult for small landlords to submit it and we have, you know, we have a lot of time wasted. And so, I just want to say that we just simply, another thing is like, we're being a rent control, rent control area, when we do the capital improvement, that is a formula that they have, it's very complicated and I don't know any landlords in East Palado ever submitted the rent increase due to the capital improvement. So this really encouraged the landlord to, to do that capital improvement. And then property values compared with the rest of San Mateo County is one of the lowest in the city. And we were facing selling the property and we couldn't even get the price that we were, you know, we did pay. So this is a time, that's a thing that we, we have to go through.
Thank you. Laura Bent. Diana Chung. Bernardo Huerta.
Good afternoon, Board of Supervisors, President Groom, thank you for allowing me to speak this afternoon, I want to thank you for this as everyone else had, has, and thank you for continuing to make housing a priority, affordable housing in our county a priority. I want to echo the statements of our CEO at Samaritan House, I happen to be blessed to be the program director at Samaritan House. I want to echo Bart's statements around Samaritan House being a solution, part of the solution, and that we are looking at the tiny, the tiny housing opportunity and we do think that is a valid opportunity in our county. And I do want to emphasize that we can do that at one tenth of the cost to building affordable or apartment housing in the county. So it is a very valuable thing to be looking at and can provide a lot of housing for individuals and I want to thank Bill and his team for being flexible with the vouchers. We have a 90-bed facility that we operate, a shelter facility, where on average we have between 20 and 30 residents who are able and work very hard to get vouchers and then cannot find the housing. So the tiny housing solution came from the place of not being able to find them the housing in a time period that would work before we have to terminate our work with them at the shelter. So I think it's a very valid proposition to be looking at and again, thank you for taking the time and doing all of the hard work.
Thank you. Diana Chung, followed by Bernardo Huerta.
Hi, my name is Diana Chung and thank you for giving me this opportunity to speak and thank you supervisors and the architects who put this white paper together. I've heard a lot of people speak and I think I'm unique. I don't represent an agency, I'm not representing a landlord, and I'm not representing renters. We spoke earlier about, somebody said about NIMBYs, I'm representing the YIMBYs, the yes in my backyard. And I really want to build an accessory unit in my backyard and I can't. So the fourth step on this white paper was about fast-tracking the accessory unit process and I really hope that doesn't get lost in the shuffle of the bigger, more political topics and that you really do make sure that that does become a priority for us YIMBYs. Thank you.
Thank you. Bernardo Huerta.
Bernardo Huerta, 2124 Cooley Avenue here in East Palado. You're having IT office buildings being built right here downtown Rebel City. You're coming up with 2,000 not affordable homes for those individuals that'll be moving in, that'll be working there. Also, in Bahannon Park, there'll be 700,000 square feet of also office space being worked on. And I just feel that Fair Oaks District area right here in Rebel City will be targeted by those, those two groups once these buildings stop being built. So in about 18 months, 15 months from now, around election time, there will be more screams from people that, hey, you know, these rents are going up, we're all being kicked out. So to do nothing and seeing that you have rent stabilization is something with, which is not going to be a big program, can, right in front of you and to see in the future, what are you going to tell voters then? You did nothing or you tried to do something? So don't be, go down in history as being unable, unwilling to do anything, but just think about what's going to happen 15 months from now when these office buildings will be finished. Your constituents will feel the pressure, a lot of more pressure. Please do some, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, that was our last speaker and I, and I want to reiterate that we took no official action, we just simply asked the staff what we thought should be studied and, and asked them to do further research. So we didn't take any action, we made no official decisions today. So now, if you all want to offer some, some wrap-up thoughts?
Yeah, thank you, President Groom. Well, just as you said, we haven't really made any final decisions, but I just thought I'd offer a couple of other ideas or maybe suggestions or, as you know, I've always been interested in foreign labor housing, so I want to make sure that we continue with that focus and of course, we do have that Affordable Housing Fund and we've talked about that before and making sure that really focus on our clients from HSA, Behavioral Health and Recovery Services in persons coming out of institutions and especially foster children. And some additional ideas, this actually comes out of a comment from Mid Penn, Jan from Mid Penn, we talked about preservation and I would like to see us create or look at creating additional Affordable Housing Fund with the specific purpose of working with organizations like Mid Penn, our nonprofit, that were willing and able to purchase some existing rental units to maintain affordability. Of course, we would have to become partners in that. And then, you know, in thinking about North Fair Oaks and some of the units that, you know, are pretty dilapidated and have many problems, you know, for those units, I think we, it was just a suggestion of looking at those because they probably, or hopefully they are currently being rented at below-market rate because, and they are affordable because of location or condition of building or other market forces. I'd like to have us consider a fund to rehabilitate these loan units with forgivable loans on the condition that the rents remain low for a set period of time. I do want to explore the potential of an Affordable Housing Bond to build deed-restricted rental units and if we could actually, maybe, I'm not sure if it's possible, but if we could actually do an Affordable Housing Bond of sufficient size and we could build deed-restricted rental units probably along the El Camino somewhere, what's called the Grand Boulevard, I think we would have an impact on, on rental units in the private market. Something about our own county employees, I think our own county employees are having a difficult time and I'd like to see us have a program, a set aside work, we could, you know, many of our employees live for, pretty far away and it's very difficult for them to live in San Mateo County. So I'd like to see us develop a mortgage support program for our own county employees with the concept that the, essentially it would be a second mortgage. And we've done this before for higher level people, I'd like to see us do this for all county employees at any given income level with a home, it should be a home purchase in San Mateo County, not necessarily a first-time home buyer, but the first-time home buyer in San Mateo County. Could be a second loan secured by deed trust, the interest level, length of loans and other restrictions would be, yet to be determined. I'd like to see us set aside about a million dollars a year for the next couple of years to see this, if, how successful that kind of a program would be. And my reason would be is that first of all, it would, it would reduce greenhouse gas reductions in our county, would reduce the number of miles traveled by our employees and I think it's a good employee recruitment and retention tool. And as one of the speakers earlier today said, every time you build a unit or have somebody live in San Mateo County, you take one car off of the bridge, off of the freeway and I think it's a, I think it's a, it's a notable goal for a number of reasons. There are some other interesting things that came up today about working with the cities, well, working with cities, school districts for potential surplus land, seeing if, you know, the college district has done some really innovative things in building on both CSM and then Canyata. That, one, the other interesting idea that came up was property tax benefit for landlords that are charging below-market rate rents. I think that's something I'd like to see us explore. Shawna from Rebuilding Together talked about rehabbing single-family homes and the interesting thing is Shawna can no longer live in San Mateo County, she had, is going to Chico because of the cost of housing, but rebuilding together is an important part of, of retaining affordability for some houses that are, you know, held by longtime families. In our last speaker, we really have to really overcome NIMBYism that, you know, some of these neighborhoods really object to building additional housing. I, I think that's got to be something, somehow we have to make it clear to residents that more affordable housing in San Mateo County because we are going to have more, you know, employees. That's either, that's going to choke traffic. The only way really to deal with that is to really demonstrate that having, having people live closer to where they work actually reduces traffic and it's, you're never going to really change that, but at least you can stop the continuous gridlock that we see in our freeways. And that especially, essentially concludes my remarks.
Don, you actually hit on some really good ones.
Oh, thanks.
You did, I mean, the one that really struck me...
Every once in a while I come up with a good one.
No, you did, you did. You know, you know, what's that? Must be the necktie, it's the green, it's the... You know, I think this is always a difficult thing, we have 11 ideas here and all of them need our attention and the hardest part, I think that's going to happen with staff is trying to balance, you know, how do we protect the good landlords, but how do we also protect the tenants, the ones that are being gouged? And that's going to be a tough balancing act and I think we really need to look very hard at that as to how we try to make it work for both and, you know, not just pick up an idea from another city and dust it off and bring it here, but make it actually work for the, the community as a whole. You know, this whole idea about preservation, you know, we have a tremendous number of seniors here in San Mateo County and it's just... It's just continuing to grow. And, you know, it was mentioned earlier that the health plan of San Mateo County is working together with housing groups to try to keep people in their homes. And I think that's really important. And I think in doing that, we also have an opportunity then to also work with hip housing and even enhance the shared programs, because there's still a lot of seniors, I think, that would like to live in their homes, but as they age, it gets a little bit harder. So if we can help them on both ends, I think that may add some, some additional housing stock. I do think that, what I, one of the things I want to ask of staff is, you know, we've thrown out 11 ideas here, all of which we want to study further and make sure we have all the information we possibly can to make some moves forward. What's your timing for doing this? I mean, as people said, we don't want to take forever to do this, to at least come back with some ideas and further study quickly, so we can determine whether or not we want to go down this path or that path. Is there a timeframe for this?
On the whole, through the President, our plan is to bring something back through the budget process. So by June, there are a few items, particularly on the zoning side, that we're going to, it'll take a little bit longer. But what we're going to do after today is go back and develop a specific work plan, and we can share with you that, those specific dates. The ones that are easy to do, we'll do as quickly as possible.
Okay. I'm not going to repeat a lot of what Don mentioned, because he brought up some really good ideas. And I do think the one thing that's very difficult in our county that's maybe different than other areas, we're 70% open space. So we don't have a lot of room to build. So it is going to be incumbent upon us to look at the schools, even look at our own county lands. We have a lot of land around the county that's, that's quasi-surplus, not all of it is. But even on our county property here, there's nothing to say we can't, we want to add other buildings here, but it doesn't mean we can't add housing with it. And that's what the Community College did, to provide for their teachers. That could be something for employees as well. So I just want us to kind of look under every rock and see, you know, what there is that we can bring forward to kind of balance all, all the interests in it. It's not always the easy thing to do. So, you know, it's, it's something I think we can be a little more creative maybe than other counties, but really try to make it work for everybody.
Dave?
A couple, a couple of comments. First, I really thank everyone for attending and for everyone's testimony. I think probably we have about a third of the original audience, so the diehards. We always have to stay the whole time, actually. And actually, we're happy to do so, of course. But, you know, the, the comments are valuable on a lot of levels. I mean, first, there were a number of ideas that were generated, a number of which Supervisor Horsley also spoke to. And, you know, people made good points on both sides of the rent stabilization issue. And, and it's also really important for us to hear real stories about how people are affected by this, because, you know, it's not an academic discussion. Just two, two of the solutions, I just wanted to put a little extra emphasis on. One did not get a lot of emphasis, although Don just, just did raise it, and I'd like to echo that, is in many ways, the best form of rent stabilization or rent control is to be an owner. Because then you, you know what your mortgage payment is. You know, under, under Proposition 13, you know what your taxes are. And so, you know, you could, you have, you have some certainty, you have something you can plan around. And that's what renters don't have, particularly in this market. So Hart has a program today, you know, for first-time buyers, that has had some modest success. There's a friend of all of ours, a staff member for Congresswoman Spear, who, but for that program, would be probably out of this county, because he and his young family were really on the cusp of, they really couldn't afford the rent. If the rent went up much more, they'd probably would have had to leave. But with this Hart help on the down payment, they're actually, you know, condo now. So they've, they've got, they've got their, they've got some stability. And if I remember, Don and Warren, of course, are on Hart. Now, I think, you know, you have to acquire, you have to, the program only contribute to a unit like up to like 600,000. It's relative, so there aren't that many units anymore that it applies to. But, you know, you wonder with, whether we could raise that ceiling a little bit and have some of our, our funds go into that. There's a similar program in Napa that you hear about all the time, that a similar thing is just kind of get people in the door. And what's great about it is that the default rates are minuscule. You know, it's, you know, so basically, it's a revolving fund. There's not a lot of risk, and it will, you know, ownership is, ownership is, is a great thing. And the second one to emphasize, again, as Don raised, it is, you know, the idea of acquiring existing rental units, you know, that perhaps are in poor condition, and rehabilitating them is, I think, a great form of preservation. Or this idea that you would provide some loans to people. But, you know, you don't, the most expensive way to create a new affordable housing unit is to build it from the ground up. And that's really expensive. So my preference would be to do that, to do some of these other things first. And then, then finally, my, my biggest final points are, you know, really today, we had these 10, you know, we had 10 items that were relatively, you know, relatively straightforward. And then, of course, we have the very, you know, more controversial issue of rent stabilization. But, you know, on the 10, 10 that, that don't have the heated debate, you know, if we do them well, they should cause heated debate. You know, they should push the envelope, because, you know, if we don't kind of, you know, push things like density and put these, put these tiny houses in various places, or allow more second units, I mean, if we really do those things, as we all know, we're going to have people yelling and screaming at us. So I would say that, you know, we would not have been successful with these 10 measures if no one's yelling at us. Otherwise, I don't know if we, I, I think we would have done them already. So that's why they don't get done, you know? And it, because it comes down to the, you know, because our, so many of our constituents, you know, it's a balance. And I think what we've heard today is maybe the pendulum needs to go a little further in the side towards density and getting people mad. And then, and then I, I'm pleased that we'll continue to, continue to look at the, the rent stabilization. I think there are, there are some ideas in there that are worthy of some study. Thank you.
Well, part of the problem with letting Supervisor Horsley go first-
Yeah.
I thought, that was a great opportunity.
It really was, thank you. But I just wanted to emphasize one or two of the things that he mentioned, which are of interest to me. And one is this whole notion of buy versus build. And that is that there are units in, on the coast, and I'm sure in all throughout the districts where, somebody was talking about a burned-out unit in North Fair Oaks earlier, where the county might put up some seed money, and a nonprofit actually would run it and keep it as, or affordable housing. And obviously, that greatly shortens the timeframe when you talk about building something from scratch versus acquiring something. And maybe the, the staff could look into that. I know it was one of our, one of our items, but that's of special interest to me. The other thing is the first-time home buyer program, which has been talked about. And I think it's really important to try to think through ways in this housing issue to create pathways to wealth for people. And homeownership, you know, that first-time home buyer program is an important step, I think, in, in doing that, in creating that path. So very interested in that first-time home buyer program. You may not know, or you may know that my wife is the, on the Redwood City School Board. And so I, you know, hear from time to time about teacher issues and school issues. And one of the issues that came up today, I think from the woman from Pacifica, was that teachers are leaving the district because they can't afford housing. The same thing is happening in Redwood City. I'm certain it's happening throughout the county. So this idea of trying to help public employees, whether it's San Mateo County or our schools, I think is really worthwhile. Another idea is maybe, I don't really know where it leads, but to talk to the Facebooks or the Googles or the Genentechs to talk about this idea of affordable housing. And Facebook is building, you know, extensively down in Eastern Menlo Park. Maybe it's time to talk to some of those corporations about making some investments in affordable housing. The other thing I just wanted to say is I'm, not that I'm a high controller or anything, but I'm really interested in this process that's going to be used by the staff in, in trying to get this thing done by June. And maybe there's a way that, rather than wait till the very end and hear everything, maybe there's a way to increment that out through time so that it's not all happening at one, at one juncture. And I just wanted to, you know, a couple of the younger people, one from the North, North Fair Oaks Community Council that spoke, and then the, the mother who spoke, who was living with her brother and sister and family, eight members in, in an apartment. I just wanted to read something that really touched me, and I wanted to share it with you all. And it's from, the source is California Legislative Office, California's High Housing Costs, Causes and Consequences document. And in one of the sections, it talks about crowding, crowding. And it says, crowded housing affects well-being and educational achievement. Individuals who live in crowded housing generally have worse educational and behavioral health outcomes than people do that don't live in crowded housing. Among adults, crowding has been shown to increase stress and aggression, lead to social isolation, and weaken relationships between parents and children. Crowding also has particularly notable effects on children. Researchers have found that children in crowding housing score lower on standardized math and reading exams. A lack of available and distraction-free study space appears to affect educational achievement, and crowding may also result in sleep interruptions that affect mood and behavior. As a result, children in crowded housing also displayed more behavioral problems at school. That, that touches me. And I think one of the takeaways is just, we need to do something for those children that are living in these conditions. And I'm confident that the work of staff will lead to steps in the right direction. So with that, I'll, I'll stop there. Thank you.
Thank you. I, I agree with everything that's been said, obviously. I don't think we've had a bad idea from, from, from the audience or from our staff or from Supervisor Horsley. But I'm curious about the funding, because we talked about, several funding issues came up. One, one was the, a housing bond. One was, they're talking in Sacramento about a recorder fee that would, that would go, that would become a dedicated fund for housing. They also talked about cap and trade. And I, I'm always, I'm quite puzzled by cap and trade, because if you watch the news every night, it's going to fund everything in the state of California. So, but how do we get in line for it? If, because if there is going to be housing, we better be first in line. Because if we do want to start purchasing some buildings and rehabbing them, we, we're going to need some cash. So, because I think that is the most expedient way to especially get our clients and our foster kids into, into a nice, into some sort of nice housing, is to find buildings and rehab them and move, move our clients in. So I'm curious about cap and trade and, and other funding sources. The other thing I want to ask you all is, are you interested at all in, in, in broadening our net and, and kind of forming a, a housing task force with members of the cities and members of, of housing organizations and, and other people? And I know it's going to be a BERT, a staff time again, and we've already given you enough, a lot to do. But we keep taught, we have such a limited ability with the unincorporated area, that can we work with certain cities, put a task force together? It's not going to be easy, it's not going to be quick, but, but really organize something so that we can work with the cities and, on some of these ideas, and, and be, help them creatively find, find a way to solve housing in, in their cities also, without telling them what to do. So is that of interest to you all? Okay. Okay.
I think one of the things that cities, and we've talked about this, I think where we can help cities, a lot of them, of course, there is a NIMBYism, but the leveraging of funds. When they lost redevelopment-
Yeah.
-a lot of them can't do anything. And part of it's not being able to leverage it or leverage it with a, a nonprofit. So I do think the cities have probably greater potential for development than we do in a lot of ways. And I think the leveraging of our funds that we've talked about would be a great idea.
And so we would call it a task force on affordable housing. I mean, that would really be our main, our, our main thread, is to, to come up with ideas for everybody to have some more affordable housing. Anything else to wrap up? Ms. Johnson? Okay. Well, I want to also thank those of you who are left for, for being, for staying with us this long. And stay tuned, because we'll have lots to report back.